Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Pete Festerson, District One.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just share three thoughts before we get started here today. One is that it is a bit of a milestone for our community today as we enter our vaccination phase one B for our population over 80. We encourage all of those to get signed up and for all those that want a shot to get one as soon as possible as we efficiently move through this next tier of priority designations and try to get to the general population of our community as soon as possible as we manage through the pandemic. Secondly, I'd mention and recognize Dr. Thompson and the Human Rights and Relations Committee. You may have noticed two big trophies down here this morning. We're going to have a short presentation on the Martin Luther King Junior Awards to worthy high school students. It's been a bit of a different time this year given COVID and not able to have the actual students here today to be recognized, but it's important. We do listen to them. Having been a judge last year, it's a really impressive group of kids talking about issues of importance around racism and creativity and justice and poverty and all things we should care about. So we look forward to hearing from him here in a minute. And then lastly, I would say it's a big day in the family of our city clerk, Eliza Butler. Her five-year-old Wesley Butler has a birthday today, so we want to recognize Wesley. Hopefully Wesley is watching his mom today and I'll go ahead and declare February 2nd Wesley Butler Day in the City of Omaha.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white diner on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Dr. Thompson.
Good afternoon. Franklin Thompson, Human Rights and Relations Department, 1819 Farnham, Room 502. I stand before the council today recognizing the winner of our school trophy for the third annual Martin Luther King Living the Dream Award. The actually, we've been giving, all week, we've been giving individual trophies to students. We've driven out to their schools and dropped them off at their schools. And the reason why we had to do that is because the ceremony was 100% virtual this year. We usually hold it live down at the Holland Theater, so the children, the students would leave that night with their trophies. So we've been delivering them piecemeal, but we always come before the council to deliver the school trophy. Now, the school trophy is a traveling trophy. It goes from school to school to school and it can stay within a school. The first year it went to Central High School and last year it went to Northwest. This year it goes to North High School. And the criteria for determining whether you're the social justice high school of the year is twofold. One being the school itself and its curriculum and its administration and the teachers, et cetera. And then the other half being the actual competition itself and the kid, the student entries and how they, how they express themselves each year. I'd like to start by saying that North High School is a school of approximately 1,800 people. And they are an inner-city diverse school, mixture of many different races with a very high graduation, on-time graduation rate. And in addition, they have quite a bit of extra things in terms of their, their English curriculum has offerings for multiculturalism and their history department has offerings. And then in particular, they have student clubs and some of the student clubs that North High has is the Black Student Leadership Council, of which I attended one of those meetings. And I saw about 60, 65 young people very engaged. They have an African-American Heritage Council. They have a culture club. They have a gay straight alliance. They have a group that's called Just Friends and that's a group that collaborates between able-bodied and, and people of, of ability awarenesses together. And then they're in the process of establishing a Latino Leaders Club. In addition, there are some other auxiliary groups that they have there, the traditional Spanish Club, French Club, German Club. But they also have a club called Habits of High Achievers and that being an educator, that really makes me smile when I see a club like that. And then another thing that makes me smile is they have a group called Educators, Rising Educators Club. And we need more people to be future teachers. So all of the, the structural things are in place and North has shown a great propensity to be forward-thinking in the area of social justice and multiculturalism. And then this year, there were more entries from North than any other school. And even though the overall grand prize winner was from West Side, North had the best conglomerate group that came together as a group and presented. So I would like to, first of all, are there any North High grads in the, in the building? Please stand up if you're a North High grad. I was going to sing the Go Vikings song, but I'm going to, I'm going to skip that because we're not having a whole lot of Vikings here today. But I'd like for the school representative to come forward, please. Go ahead and announce your name and who you represent and which position.
Okay, hello everyone. I am Kiana Witts. I'm the department chair of Special Education at North High School. And so I'm here to represent the North family.
And Ms. Witt was very instrumental in both years, last year and this year. Last year we were live, this year we were virtual. But Ms. Witt literally took me by the hand and took me from class to class to class last year and was very instrumental in getting students engaged. And I want to thank you for your, your work and your willingness. This is the trophy and for the 2021 school year, please display it proudly. And next year, do you have the right to keep it? Yes, you do, depending on, you know, what happens. But we thank you for being a role model and for getting our kids ready to be change agents because that's what it's all about. And we appreciate you. And once again, if everybody could give North High a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. We'll give you just a minute to.
Uncle went to North High School, if that's good enough, if you'd like to sing for us.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Indian Trails located northeast of 192nd Street. George Miller Parkway, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant Smart Development LLC. Before you is a preliminary plat for 85 new residential lots out on 192nd Street. This property was formerly owned, 20 acres formerly owned by the Gottsch family. In between Fort Street on the north and Maple Street on the south, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. So we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Hartwood Residences located Northwest of Pacific Street. An Applied Parkway, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, my name's Joe Flaxbeard with Lampar Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road. On behalf of the applicant, Applied Underwriters, I'm also joined here with Barti Manuel with Applied Underwriters. This project is a preliminary plat for a single-family residential development within the Hartwood Preserve. It's a mix of single-family detached, attached, and some row home products. Really excited about it. Kind of, it kind of put some new products into the Omaha residential market, so here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the Leavenworth Point Commerce Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3105-3115 Leavenworth Street and amount up to $275,000.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project is a comprehensive rehab of three commercial buildings on Leavenworth. Get oriented here. Okay, here we have Leavenworth, site is surrounded by the yellow. It's where St. Mary's kind of merges in. Buildings are pretty recognizable. These three here. It's a comprehensive rehab. The commercial use when it's finished. Galls Uniform occupies both ends of the building. They're looking for a new location, have been for a while. Developer John Heine, I believe he's joined us with video conference today. Project is about 2.5 million. Some renderings. They're requesting 275, excuse me, 275,000 in TIF support. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Mr. Heine.
Hi, City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, your name and address, John.
Yep, John Heine, 912 South 31st Street. I'm the applicant. Excited about the project and here to answer any questions that, that may be out there.
You can turn that off. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, applications to consider Class D liquor licenses for Buc-E's Express for multiple locations as listed on the agenda.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. We have the applicant registered by video conference. Ms. Lippert.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing us and Jim Sclotho from our corporate office is here as well.
Thank you. We'll unmute him. Will there be, you're here to answer any questions or do you have a presentation you'd like to make?
Just, I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on item nine? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items 10 through 12 were held on January 26, 2021. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 13 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 44, a resolution to request the Douglas County Election Commission to mail early voter ballot request cards to all registered voters within the City of Omaha for the City of Omaha elections.
The public hearing on item 44 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Please silence electronic devices.
Lucy Madness, 3306 Burt Street. Good afternoon, councilors. I support this. I understand that during the election in 2020, the general election, records amount of voters requested their mail, vote by mail. And this situation is less restrictive than the past. I think now it's just that if you don't want to vote in person, you can request your ballot. In the past, you had to give a reason why you would be absent during election day, but that's no longer the case. And then, you know, because of the onset of the noble coronavirus, it's a good idea for folks to skip election day in person. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am opposed to this because I think there's been enough controversy over possible fraud in the mail ballots all over the country. And I think recently, our own election commissioner, Douglas County, has been back and forth on his idea of whether we're going to have mail-in ballots for everything or not. So let's get the story straight before we pass it.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I would like to get the story straight before we move on. We've always had the ability to vote by mail. This doesn't give us any more ability to vote by mail. We don't have less ability if this isn't passed. I just want to be very clear that having to give a reason for why you want to vote by mail may have been in place over, sometime over 15 years ago. All I know is, I've always gone to the polls, just the way I like to do it, but my husband has always voted by mail because he travels. So in the 15 years we've been married, he simply requests his ballot and he gets one. He doesn't have to give an excuse. He gets it and he votes by mail. So we've always had the ability. We will always continue to have the ability. What this resolution is stating is it's asking Mr. Cruz to mail every registered voter a green card, not a ballot, a green card. The green card, most of you may have already gotten because I know members of my family have already gotten them. Because once you've, once you've requested a mail-in ballot, Mr. Cruz, our election commissioner, puts you on an automatic list to get a green card for every election moving forward. Therefore, there's over 100,000 people who already, already get a green card. The green card says, if you want a ballot mailed to you, fill this out, sign it, and then we will send you a ballot. What this resolution is asking is that instead of sending the green card just to people who have previously requested a mail-in ballot, we send a green card to everyone that's a registered voter. That registered voter would then still have to fill out the green card, mail it back into the election commissioner, and then the election commissioner will add them to that list that we already have 100,000 people on. And then they will mail them a ballot. And then that ballot can either be returned to the election commission, to any number of the drop boxes. I also want to be clear that Councilman Harding actually informed me earlier today, you don't even have to use a green card. Mr. Harding said he checked with the commissioner and if you would like a mail-in ballot, you simply can take a piece of paper, write, "My name is Amy Melton. I live at 1324 North 129th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I would like a mail-in ballot, please." You don't even have to add the please. I would just add the please. And you can actually just go stick it in a box and then the election commission will send you a ballot. So in all honesty, that what we're doing today may sound controversial or sound like we're allowing mail-in ballots where you never were able to. It literally is as simple as, do we send the green card, giving you the opportunity to ask for it by green card, to every elected voter or just the ones that are already on the list? It's as simple as that. So we've had the ability in here in Nebraska and in Douglas County to vote by mail for decades. So, and our election commissioner, which we're very fortunate to have, Brian Cruz is our election commissioner. He runs a very tight ship down there at the election commission. I am 100% confident in our elections and in Douglas County elections that he does a fabulous job. So if people want to vote by mail, again, you don't have to wait to get your green card. You can actually do it right now. People who have already asked for it are already getting their green cards. Many of you probably already got one in the mail. So if you want that mail-in ballot, make sure you fill it out. Otherwise, you can still go into the election commission early if you would like to vote early. And again, you have the ability today to fill out a piece of paper to get a mail-in ballot. So in my opinion, I don't know that we should go to the extra expense of spending another $100,000 to send out green cards to those who may or may not want it. But again, I encourage people to vote. I don't think it's necessary and I, I don't know that it's a necessary expense due to the fact that you literally can put a piece of paper in that drop box and get one yourself without us spending 100,000. But we did it, we did it in the last election. I think it turned out well and it increased, it increased the voter turnout. So although I don't necessarily agree with the additional expense, I, I support voter turnout. So if we want to send green cards out to everyone, it's just the people that spoke earlier, I think, may have misled people into what it was really about. So I just wanted to get that, this story straight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will start out by saying I think that Brian Cruz, the election commissioner and his staff do a fantastic job. And I think that was evidenced by in the, the last election, the general election, when there was a power outage at the election commissioner's office. They were still able to, with a little delay, but still process all those in line that wanted to, to vote early. So as, as Commissioner, Councilwoman Melton just said too, actually, the last two elections, the spring primary and the November general, green cards were mailed to all the registered voters. So people have had the opportunity over the last two elections to opt into that program. I do find it interesting now that with, with this resolution to mail to the remaining, I think 65,000 or so that haven't, haven't pre-registered for early ballots prior. Not only is there that additional expense of, you know, somewhere between 65,000 and 100,000, there's also the time delay. Because the, the time it would take for the printing and putting the mailer together and getting those out to the remaining 65,000 or so, it would be the end of February. So every day from now until the end of February, you could register to have an early ballot. You wouldn't have to sit around and wait till the end of February to get the little green card, check the box, put it in the mail or, or in the election drop boxes or to the election commissioner's office. You could do that every day from now until the end of February and not wait for that additional step in order to, to register. But, you know, I'd rather see that, if we had that extra money to go to, you know, some rent relief or utility relief for those that have been affected by COVID. I will be supportive of this because I too believe that we should, you know, I encourage all people to, to vote. I, I also like to go to the poll in person. I took my kids, when they were little, to the polls with me just to get them into that habit. I think it's, it's a good public process for, for all of our kids to, to kind of understand and go through. But again, if you want to, if you want to register for an early ballot, you can do that today. You don't need to wait until a month from now to get, for those who haven't gotten it, to get that green card. And I'll just point out too, in the spring elections, I think we had 88% of the vote was done by mail. And then in the, in the fall, it was, it was a little over 50% that were actually by mail. So part of the point of that is, obviously, in, in the throes or the height maybe of, or the beginning, the onset of the pandemic, there was, there was a greater interest in doing that by mail. But by November, you could see a, a strong drop-off in those that wanted to do it by mail and actually wanted to go back to the polls and do that. But again, if it's, if it's to encourage the voter turnout, I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. As the introducer of this resolution, I did so because I'm not running for reelection. So I thought it'd be appropriate for someone who didn't have a stake in the outcome of the elections to be the person who introduced this. As a cost-effective means of promoting a safe alternative to how people vote in the midst of a pandemic, I thought that voting by mail for the modest expenditure of funds would be well worth it for the citizens of our community. And also as a means of hopefully promoting more interest in the city elections, which typically have turnouts far inferior to those in the even number years. And the thought behind that is, is that the more people who are interested in their city government and participate in their city government and can do so in the middle of a pandemic in a safe manner, that would be something that would be very effective and wise to do and something we should pursue. Now, in terms of you, your ability to request that, you can go on votedouglascounty.com right now and you can find all kinds of ways that you can save us the expenditure by requesting a ballot, by email or other ways, fax, other, other ways, right from Mr. Cruz's website. In terms of the drop-off last year between the spring primary with a very high voter turnout, however, I think it's important to note to the fall, there was also widespread media reports about funny business going on with the U.S. Postal Service last year. So that was a, something that came about where people said, hey, I want to vote in person because I'm seeing all these news media reports. So that was a big reason why I think there was a migration to in-person voting in a pandemic. Here in Omaha, though, as Councilmember Melton. Here in Omaha, though, as Councilmember Melton learned and those from Mr. Cruz, he ran an effective operation, and the election was administered smoothly, and we didn't have those reports of widespread postal service issues. So with that, I'd ask councilmembers for their support. Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President, item 44 is approved 7 to 0. Item 45, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group 2021-01, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 46, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal in the city of Omaha, group 2021-02.
Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 47, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on those lots and pieces of real estate within the Benson Business Improvement District, number 6875, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 48, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on those lots and pieces of real estate within the Blackstone Business Improvement District, number 6877, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 49, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on those lots and pieces of real estate within the Dundee Business Improvement District, number 6876, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Plaramo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 50, an ordinance to acquire private property for the construction of 99th and Fort Street Erosion Storm Sewer Repair Project.
The public hearing on item 50 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
No.
Just public hearing today.
Item 51, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for copper fields located northeast of 204th and F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Welcome, Mr. Bachmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Bachmann, 10250 Regency Circle, on behalf of the applicant. You have planning board and department approvals. We're requesting your approval today.
We're on public hearing today. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. There's no vote today. It'll be the next meeting.
Item 52, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for the Grove located northeast of 192nd and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 52 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
John Bachmann, 10250 Regency Circle, on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for Blondo 108 Business Park located at 10909 Burdette Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 53 begins at this time. We have Mr. Detlous, registered by video conference.
Hi, Joe Detlous of Thompson, Druison, and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here representing the applicant and answering, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve and authorize an agreement with Industrial Organization Solutions for completing police and fire department entry level and promotional testing for a term of three years.
The public hearing on item 54 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? And we have someone with IO Solutions, Chad. Is it legal?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Deb Sanders, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions you might have.
And Rebecca Nunley, Employment Manager for the City of Omaha Human Resources Department. Chad Legal is the CEO of IO Solutions.
He's here to answer any questions as well?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Kathy Bossman, Assistant Chief with the Omaha Fire Department, 1516 Jackson. The Fire Department is a proponent of IO Solutions, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hello, Ken Fox, Lieutenant with the Omaha Police Department, 15th and Jackson also, and Omaha Police Department is a proponent of IO Solutions. Here to answer any questions if you need it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Just a public hearing today.
Item 55, an ordinance to accept the bid of Airmark Uniforms Services to provide linen and towels for the Omaha Fire Department for a total annual cost of $30,000.
The public hearing on item 55 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 56, an ordinance to amend section 22-123 of the Omaha Municipal Code to modify the provisions relating to pension benefits.
The public hearing on item 56 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 57, an ordinance to amend sections 20-44 and 20-45 of the Omaha Municipal Code to clarify vague language and provide a notice requirement before police make arrests or issue citations.
The public hearing on item 57 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney. I'm here on behalf of the City Law Department. These amendments were generated by a settlement of a lawsuit that came about when the ACLU sued the city over some protests that took place this summer. Basically, these changes are giving notice to protesters and other people who may be in violation of these ordinances in advance before an arrest is made. These notices are generally given anyway, but this will mandate that and put this into a codified form. These changes were negotiated with the assistance of the Omaha Police Department, with the City Prosecutor's Office, and the ACLU also agreed to it, obviously, via the settlement. So we would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Scott Gray, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any?
Louisiana 3306, Burt Street. Am I going to be able to speak on another item if I speak on this one?
You're on item 57, so you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. This is a needed clarification on your municipal codes. When there's protests and confrontation with police, the police are supposed to posture to de-escalate the situation. That doesn't always happen. In this particular situation over the summer, protesters were put through a lot of stress after the arrests were made. So, you know, this has to do with municipal codes, but the grievances that the protesters have aren't just with the arrest. It's with the hours, almost a whole day, of distress that they were under because it was a mass arrest, and there was just so many people to arrest. And who knows if OPD has ever done that before? So this has apparently come to a settlement or agreement, and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 58, an ordinance to amend Chapter 12, Article 3, entitled Prevention of COVID-19. To extend the sunset provision for the mask mandate is communications in support, be communications in opposition.
Before we begin the public hearing on item 58, we'd ask the Douglas County Health Director, Adi Pour, if you would like to say a few remarks of the state of this pandemic in the city of Omaha. Dr. Pour.
Good afternoon, Councilmember, and I just would like to make a few comments. You know, can you hear her? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Please refrain from commenting from the gallery. I heard you, and I would ask that the microphones be turned up. And Dr. Pour, if you could bring the two microphones closer together, that sometimes helps. Thank you.
I will do that. So thank you again, Adi Pour, Douglas County Health Department, 111 South 41st Street. So November was the worst month of COVID-19 in Douglas County. It was the worst month in regards to cases. We had 110 new cases on a seven-day rolling average per 100,000, where at this time, we are 29.6 new cases per 100,000. We had 445 COVID patients in our area hospitals, and that now, over the last four days, we had less than 200. We had 157 individuals who died in November, and at this time, in January, is around 50 now. So you can see, everything has decreased at this time, and we are potentially now at October levels, so to say. However, vaccination has just started the last week of December, and we have vaccinated close to 50,000 individuals in Douglas County, 35,000 with the first dose only and 15,000 with first and second dose. So those individuals are fully vaccinated, potentially 3% of our community. We started the vaccination of seniors today, actually, those 80 years and above, and as we are hearing, it's going very well, and everybody is anxious to get vaccinated. So the question really is, do we still need to have a mask mandate? And if so, why? We need to continue to wear masks, and I would say to reduce the transmission of the droplets that carry coronavirus, also to decrease the spread of mutant strains that have now appeared. You have heard the UK strain, South Africa and Brazilian strains. To have a more open economy, I think we need to wear masks and to let us open schools. We have opened a few of them already last fall, as you remember, and now OPS is opening schools as we speak now. Vaccinations also are not 100% effective. We do not know if the vaccines prevent transmission. That's not what the trials were about. The trials were about to see if vaccines prevent serious health effects, hospitalizations, and death. So we should follow also the federal mandates that we all have heard about now, that masks need to be worn on public transportation and on federal buildings. In summary, the two main reasons why I think we need to continue the mask mandate is that our vaccination effort has just started, and second, the emergence of these new variants underscore that it remains critical to continue the mitigation efforts that we know work to slow the spread of coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pour. We'll now open the public hearing with the first proponents. But before I do begin this and calling them, remember, we're using a sign-in sheet today for both in-person testimony and people who registered to testify by video conferencing. If you don't hear your name called and you have signed in, then there was an issue with the inability of the clerk to verify the validity of the address that you provided. So if, after calling the names whose addresses have been verified, you don't hear your name, please step down here to the side and see the city clerk so they can make an effort to verify your address to give you an opportunity to speak. The first proponent, Dr. Mark Rupp, Nebraska Medical Center, 4200 Emily, Omaha.
Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Mark Rupp, and I reside on 100th Avenue in the city of Omaha. I'm a professor in chief of the Division of Infectious Diseases at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. I previously appeared before the Omaha City Council, and I urge the city council to enact a mask mandate to help prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. I believe that it would be imprudent to relax our guard against COVID-19, and I urge you to maintain the current mask mandate. In my previous testimony, I outlined four ways in which face masks help to prevent the spread of COVID-19. In the ensuing months, studies and data continue to accrue demonstrating the effectiveness of face masks. Time limits preclude a more extensive review of supportive data. However, it suffices to say that face masks are effective, and the CDC and the WHO strongly support the use of face masks to curtail the spread of COVID-19. For your consideration, I would like to point out three pertinent issues that I feel are critical in deciding whether to amend the Omaha mask mandate. First, COVID-19 remains very widespread in the Omaha community. As noted in this figure that you see from the Douglas County COVID dashboard, although the case incidence rates have recently declined, the seven-day rolling average of positive cases per million population per day is 310. I suggest that the seven-day average case rate should be less than five per 100,000 or 50 per million per day prior to relaxing any of our precautions. This would equate to approximately 25 to 30 cases per day in the county. We have a long ways to go prior to reaching the goal of low-level transmission in Omaha. This was just supported by what Dr. Pour said. Second, variants of SARS-CoV-2 are increasingly being described that appear to be significantly more transmissible, possibly more severe, and potentially less responsive to medical therapy. Unfortunately, our ability to detect these variants is not as robust as desired. However, they have been defined in 32 states to date, including our neighboring state of Iowa. It is likely that we have low levels in our community. The graph that I'm showing now demonstrates the explosive growth in new cases of COVID-19 in the United Kingdom that was associated with the emergence of the UK 117 variant. Unfortunately, we should anticipate the arrival of this or other similar variants in our community. Third, it will be months before the COVID-19 vaccine has been widely distributed in the community. At the present time, approximately 3% of the adult population of Douglas County has been vaccinated. Widespread vaccination is our best pathway forward to reach herd immunity. However, estimates of the percentage of the population that will need to be immune to reach herd immunity range from approximately 60% to 85% or higher. It will be many months before we reach that level of immunity through vaccination of the public. One of the key lessons taught by the COVID-19 pandemic is that it is better to be proactive than reactive. Trying to get the epidemic under control after it has spread widely is extremely difficult and results in excess suffering, death, and economic hardship. Now is not the time to relax the mask mandate for the city of Omaha. Now is the time to reemphasize the need for all persons to continue to physically distance and to wear a face mask until we have widespread vaccination throughout the Omaha community. I most emphatically urge you to protect the health of the citizens of Omaha and to extend the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just note, you were over by 35 seconds. The next proponent is Dr. Ali Khan, Nebraska Medical Center, 4200 Emily Street. He has auto-focus too, so.
It's in auto-focus?
Yeah. There it goes.
Mr. President, councilmembers, citizens of Omaha, I'm Ali Khan. Although I work at the local university, I represent science, and I'm at 984355 Medical Center Drive. I have three messages in three minutes. I have three messages in three minutes on how masks save lives. Message number one is masks work. Just like they do for healthcare professionals, just like they have done for over 100 years, and just like they will do for these new variants, masks are no different than seatbelts. Masks are so effective that in Europe, they are now moving from these simple cloth masks to N95 masks to prevent the spread of these new variants. Message number two, the science is indisputable that masks work. There are over 296,000 articles published on COVID in the last 13 months. Of those 200 and almost 300,000 articles, there’s 1,000 articles that talk about the effectiveness of masks. I can go into attributable risk, odds ratios, what a basic reproductive rate, general estimating equations, but let’s make this really simple, which is that we have lots of data across the United States. This is just in the last month or two. This one showing a 10% increase in mask-wearing is associated with a decrease in transmission. Here is an experiment right here from Kansas, where some counties decided to wear masks and some counties decided not to wear masks. Those that decided to use a mask mandate saw a decrease in new cases. Those counties without a mask mandate saw 100% increase in cases. What there is not in these 296,000 papers is a single study that shows adverse events of masks. My third message for you is, science and evidence saves lives. What we have learned is that countries such as New Zealand and Australia that decided to use masks and public health measures have little to no cases today, whereas other countries that did not use public health measures have found themselves with widespread COVID transmission. This data I can show you for different parts of the U.S. I thought I would just show you for the U.S. So, the orange, the purple line is what’s going to happen in the U.S. over the next month, and the green line underneath it is how many lives we could save if we, everybody had universal masking in the United States. And my final message to you is, wearing a mask is the patriotic thing to do to save your citizens.
If there are any more outbursts, the sheriff will clear the room.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next proponent is Sarah Cohen, 15422 Seward Street, Omaha.
Sarah Cohen, 15422 Seward Street. I’m here today to urge you to extend the mask mandate. This simple, reasonable step will help protect our loved ones and our neighbors, keep our kids in school, and keep our businesses open. This is a public health measure grounded in evidence. Politics should not play a role in this decision. Dr. Pour and the experts from UNMC and Nebraska Medicine have done an excellent job of explaining why extending the mask mandate is important from a medical perspective. We’re lucky here in Omaha to have some of the country’s very best infectious disease and public health experts. We should follow their advice. It’s not just about saving lives and preventing illnesses, although that’s very important. As a parent, like so many others I have spoken with, I want to keep my kids learning, in the classroom, with their friends. We all need to do our part. We need our elected officials to put politics aside, listen to the science, and extend the mask mandate, so we can keep our kids learning and our teachers teaching without taking unnecessary risks. Keeping this common sense measure in place until we can control the virus is important for our local economy, too. An uncontrolled pandemic is bad for business. That’s why some of Omaha’s largest employers have asked this council to pass a mask mandate. Now, I’ve heard some people say that they’re in favor of masks but against a mandate. That position just doesn’t make sense. Studies have shown that places with a mask mandate have fewer cases of COVID-19 than those that don’t. That’s because, unfortunately, a minority of people won’t do the right thing on their own. It’s the same as having laws against drunk driving, because in these situations, even one person doing the wrong thing can injure or kill an innocent bystander. Public health decisions shouldn’t be political. Our local government officials need to lead and show unified support for simple, practical, public health measures like this one. Now isn’t the time to let down our guard. Now is the time to do what we can to prevent unnecessary illnesses and deaths. Now is the time to protect our teachers, local business owners, and other frontline workers so that we can get through these next few months together. Now is the time to extend the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proponent registered is Alma Avant, 3532 Fontanel Boulevard, Omaha.
Thank you. This is the first time I’ve ever spoke with the City Council. Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Would you excuse me for a second?
Excuse me?
Would you hold on for just a second, stop for a sec?
Sure.
Would the sheriff please identify whose electronic device is going off in the middle of the room here and remove that person and the device?
Your phone. It was your phone.
Is that your part? It was your phone.
Please turn off your phone. I’ll call you back. Please sit down. Louise Jimenez, 3306 Burke... Yeah, turn off your phone, please, and I’ll call you back.
Thank you, Mr. President. I’m in support of extending the mask mandate. We’re told that this is something that’s slowing the spread of the virus, and that it’s considerate of others. So, that’s a good thing. Wearing these masks is conducive to being part of society during this time. Also, with Omaha, the top health official is the county health director. So, as a council and as a city government, you’re taking advice from the health director, you know, and I can go on as to why I think that this is a good thing, but there’s enough voices here in support, and I appreciate their hard work and their dedication and the risks that they take every day to deal with this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Avant or Avant, come on back up, 3532 Fontanel Boulevard.
Yes, excuse my interruption, but I am for mask mandate, and I am for the mask mandate because we see here in Omaha that our numbers are coming down. But, what I wanted to say is because I’m in the community that I live in, I asked some of the people that don’t know, you know, they just won’t wear the mask, and I asked them why, and they say they cost too much and they’re not accessible. So, my thing is that if we’re going to make a mask mandate, we need to make them affordable, napkins for $15, and we need to make them accessible to the people in the communities that aren’t wearing them. We also need to be more diligent on the convenience stores, because a lot of their, and I go often, a lot of their sales reps are not wearing masks, but we have to wear masks to go in the store. So, if it’s going to be mandated, it has to be a little bit more behind it to make it worthwhile, or otherwise, what’s the use? And I’m with the doctor. I believe that wearing a mask is our patriotic duty to keep everybody safe, whether you want to... I heard people laugh when he said that. I was appalled to think that you would laugh at a doctor who is trying to save lives, and they’ve been there every day while we’ve been at home in our own comfort areas. They’ve been there every day.
Please address the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had one person registered to speak by video conferencing who did not actually end up logging in. So, we’ll now move to the opponents. And the first one is Dr. Ben Tapper. Dr. Tapper, I promised you the other day, if any of the doctors went over, I’d give you their time that they went over. Dr. Tapper, are you here and ready to go?
Yes.
We can go with Dr. Merritt. Dr. Lee Merritt, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Tapper, you’ll have 3 minutes 35 seconds, because one of the doctors went over, and I told you I’d give you the extra time.
Thank you.
To balance it out.
Okay. Ben Tapper, 16909 Burke Street. What if we change the conversation, move the conversation away from the strength of the virus towards the strength of the body? You see, I know full well that your body’s ability to overcome disease like coronavirus is far greater than anyone, including our government, the CDC, and these administrative doctors had led you to believe. In fact, Merck, a pharmaceutical company and vaccine producer, was working on a COVID vaccine, but they stopped. The reason being, they said it was far more effective to get the virus naturally and recover than to get the shot. In fact, they said the vaccinated group had inferior immunity to the unvaccinated. And the hospitals in town, I saw them post something on social media, and I’ve also seen many claims, but they said there’s nothing you can do naturally to fight this disease, and I find that very insulting. I believe that is the worst thing you can tell a patient, because it steals all hope. And right now, these administrative doctors or organizations in the government is, they’re not using this opportunity to educate the people on what it really means to be healthy. Instead, they’re telling us there’s nothing we can do. So, just sit back in your recliner, watch your television, eat your Doritos, drink your sodas, avoid the gym, and stay far away from your neighbor, and wear multiple masks, and just wait till this savior of a vaccine comes. Well, most people I know don’t want anything to do with the vaccine. And Pfizer, one of the vaccine companies pushing this vaccine out, has a track record, and I’m going to read the short list to save time, because I only have three minutes. Pfizer received the biggest fine in U.S. history as part of a $2.3 billion plea for mispromoting medicines and paying kickbacks to complying doctors. Pfizer paid more than $60 million to settle a lawsuit over diabetes medication that caused patients to die from acute liver failure. They paid $430 million in 2004 to settle criminal charges for bribing doctors. In 2011, they committed racketeering fraud and agreed to pay $142 million in the settlement. They were caught using Nigerian children as human guinea pigs without the parents’ consent, violating the Nuremberg Code. Now, vaccines, the vaccine courts have paid over $4 billion in injuries since ’86, and only 1% of vaccine injuries are reported. Not only that, I have a dossier put together by some of the best attorneys in the nation and physicians. This is the dossier that I’m going to submit to the council, calling for the arrest of Dr. Fauci. On page four, it talks about the violations. It is well documented, well-reported, and well-researched. Some of the violations, and I’m, again, going to read the short list. Marketing manipulation, conspiring to criminal commercial activity, lying to Congress, acts of domestic terrorism resulting in the death of American citizens, and funding and conspiring to commit acts of terror. I encourage you to read through this. This was sent to me from some of the best physicians and attorneys that I know. News flash, our health is not the number-one priority of these drug commercials, or drug companies. Their main priority is to sell more drugs and vaccines. In other words, they don’t care about our health, they care about our stockholders. Germophobia used to be a mental health disorder, but now it’s considered a virtue. We’re told that a droplet causes the spread of this disease, and the germ theory doesn’t tell the full story. Blaming this disease on a droplet or germ is like blaming the flies for the trash. We must get back to being human again, loving thy neighbor, not fearing him. My shirt says the immune system is not a conspiracy.
Going to need you to wrap up.
It’s time to lift the regulations and get back to the old normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tapper. Dr. Merritt, 1811 Q Street.
Thank you very much. The only scientific point I’m going to make is that cases in the history of medicine referred to sick people, and now we’re referring to a test, and this whole thing is based on tests. And it just came out, the WHO just came out, the CDC, everyone’s just admitted these tests are false positive, up to 90%. But that’s not really what I want to talk about. I just want to talk about the reality. You know, even if masks work in some theoretical perfect situation, it is hard to swallow that when you go into a restaurant for six feet, you have to wear a mask. And then, when you sit down at the table, you’re safe without a mask, even though you’ve just taken your mask off, put it on the table, using your hands around your nose, put your cellphone on it, haven’t washed your hands, and now you’re going to eat. But you’re safe. But the minute you stand up, you’re dangerous. The minute you walk to the bathroom, you’re dangerous. Then you sit down, you’re safe again. You know, every bartender in Omaha understands this is nonsense, whether, you know, this is, it just doesn’t work that way. And as Dennis Randkort, a PhD in physics, said, although even if you think masks work somewhat, the minute you move it off your face, it makes the whole thing worthless, because now you’re breathing out into the airflow. But the saddest thing I’ve seen in this dystopian year in Omaha is out my office window. And I saw, I used to see the little kids, they were three, four-year-old kids going to preschool, and they were cute, and they were laughing and holding hands. And now, you know what I see? I can’t even look out there. I see these little children with a mask on, their heads are bowed, their hands are behind their back, they’re shuffling along, three feet separated, and it looks like a little miniature Gulag procession, which is exactly what it is. To say this is not damaging us is wrong. It’s damaging our society, it’s damaging our families, making enemies of neighbors. This is not, this is a takedown of our nation, and it’s not just about a virus. This is a psychological takedown. So, even if the masks work a little bit, this is not the answer. And I think when this all goes away, when we find the final truth here, by the way, there are treatments that we could use to prevent people from getting really sick, but 1.8 million schoolchildren in Sweden went without masks or social distancing and went to school last year without a missed day, and none of them died. So, this is a total disservice to our children. We’re ruining a generation of children. That’s our downside. Don’t tell me there’s no risk to these masks, and it’s horrible to see that. And I don’t think that we’re going to look back on this and think this was a good thing for you to vote for this mask mandate. History is not going to be happy with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Linda Burkle, 14461 Ames Plaza.
Hi, good afternoon, President and City Councilmembers. My name is Linda Berkeley. My address is 14461 Ames Plaza, apartment 304, and I come as an opponent, and I will be providing you with a packet of information. First of all, there have been numerous studies done about the efficiency of the mask, and this document has them chronicled. It’s most recently updated in January of this year. I’m just going to highlight a couple because of brevity. So, in April 2020, a review of two U.S. professors of respiratory and infectious disease from the University of Illinois concluded that face masks have no effect in everyday life, neither in self-protection nor protection of third parties, so-called source control. In August of 2020, a review by the German professor of epidemiology and hygiene found there was no evidence of the effectiveness of cloth face masks, and the appropriate daily use of masks by the public may in fact lead to infections. In many states, coronavirus infections strongly increased after mask mandates have been introduced, and this has lots of, lots of additional information. This is an important point, though. There is increasing evidence that novel coronavirus is transmitted, at least in indoor settings, not only by droplets, but also by smaller aerosysis. However, due to the large pore size and poor fit, cloth masks cannot filter out these very small particles. Over 90% of the aerosysis, I’m not pronouncing this correctly, I’m aerososis, because I’m not a medical doctor, but the mask can fill a medium-sized room within minutes. The WHO, which of course we all, you know, see as like the world expert in health, admitted to the BBC in June that the mask policy update was due not to new evidence but to political lobbying. Analysis by the U.S. CDC found that 85% of people infected with the new coronavirus reported wearing a mask always, okay, or often. Compared to the control group of uninfected people, always wearing a mask did not reduce the risk of infection. Unfortunately, because of this situation, it’s very difficult to have a control and non-control, which is needed for real scientific research. Austrian scientists found that the introduction, retraction, and reintroduction of a face Austrian scientists found that the introduction, retraction, and reintroduction of a face mask mandate in Austria had no influence on the coronavirus infection rate. And one of the earlier doctors mentioned Kansas, and so I'm going to, I have a little bit more on that. The U.S. state of Kansas, 90 counties without mask mandates have lower coronavirus infection than rates of the 15 counties with mask mandates. To hide this fact, the Kansas Health Department tried to manipulate the official statistics and data presentation. And coming from an academic scientific place myself, I know that that happens. Data is manipulated, and also it's withdrawn if it doesn't come with the desired political result.
Your time has expired, but the remainder of your remarks may be...
I'm sorry, what?
Your time has expired, but the remainder of your remarks may be given to the clerk.
Here's your copy.
You can give it to the clerk, and she'll distribute them. Thank you. Dr. Trino Nuno. 5305 South 96th Street, Omaha.
Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Trino Nuno. I am a local dentist and business owner. I've been extremely impressed with the grandiose actions of our world's government. To pretend that a simple mask will protect individuals from a virus many times smaller than the opening in the mask is a betrayal to science and to the world's populace. I had a patient recently come to me who was so afraid to come to the dental office, and when I asked her to take off her mask so that I could treat her broken tooth, she pulled her mask over her eyes and her nose, and she said, "Doc, I'm not afraid of you. I just need to cover my nose and eyes for protection against the virus." So I thought, fantastic, people are no longer afraid of the dentist, right? Tony Fauci of the NIH came out with new comments recently regarding the masks. Now, wearing two masks makes common sense, he says. This is nonsensical. At the same time, recommendations for alternative immune-boosting modalities that Dr. Tapper was alluding to, and Dr. Merritt as well, have been suppressed and censored from the mainstream media. Testing using PCR technology has become huge business. Even though PCR testing is not a diagnostic tool, it is still being used as such. It's created a mess of the data due to false positives and misclassifications of death. So here we are in February of 2021 with, in my opinion, poor data and policies based on that poor data. We now have governments practicing medicine without a license by making blanket recommendations of wearing a medical device that is meant to block saliva droplets, not viruses. We are here with a government trying to govern the people's lives when in reality they need to serve the best interests of the people by protecting their constitutional, God-given rights. Call on you, Omaha City Council members, to be logical, stop practicing medicine without a license, and start upholding the Constitution. Vote no to the mask mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Gahl, 5522 North 92nd Ave.
Will this just turn on if I put a paper under it?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And then it'll focus, so if you don't see it focus right away, it takes just a second.
Okay, thank you. As stated, my name is Natasha Gahl. Imagine a pandemic with a 99% death rate. What would you mandate to stop it? What if it totaled 19.4% of all deaths? What would you do to slow the spread? Would you require masks? Would you require everyone stay at home? If this hypothetical pandemic killed 890,000 Americans last year, what would you do? Obviously, you would do nothing because that is exactly what you are doing. This isn't a hypothetical pandemic I speak of. This pandemic kills 99% of all who encounter it. COVID kills less than 1% of all who encounter it and only accounts for 11% of all deaths in America. Let's take out comorbidities, and you have less than 2% of all deaths, American deaths last year. Therefore, for a pandemic that accounts for less than 2% of American deaths, those that died from COVID rather than those that died with COVID, you strip American rights. But for the pandemic that accounts for 21% of American deaths, you deem the clinics who perform the murders essential during a pandemic. In case you haven't figured it out, abortion is a more horrific pandemic than COVID. 19.4% of all pregnancies end in abortion. You are more likely to survive COVID than you are to survive your mother's womb. How tragic that is when our God tells us in Psalm 119:13, "For you created my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. My body, my choice, only works when it is truly your body. A preborn baby has its own DNA, organs, fingernails, all the teeth it'll ever have, their reproductive organs. A female preborn baby has its eggs already." When it becomes more crucial that we save the eggs of an eagle than it is to save our own race, the human race, we have problems. If you do this, a mandate, the next step to prevent death is to make it illegal to have sex without a condom and birth control. The next step is to tell people that you may not leave your house because you may get pregnant or get an STD. Maybe, rather than worrying about mandating masks, our city council, our Douglas County Health Board, and more specifically, our Douglas County Health Director should have people calling the police when they know someone is having unprotected sex. Instead, she has them calling on those of us who cannot wear masks. With our STD rates where they are, why aren't we having lockdowns? Why aren't condoms being mandated? STDs have more long-term side effects, can be passed during childbirth, can cause infertility, et cetera. Why aren't we doing more for the preborn and for other issues of unprotected sex than we are for a virus that is weakening by the day, a virus that is being used to control fear in the people? Remember when AIDS did that? Well, now with Biktarvy, you can get your viral load so low that you can have unprotected sex and not spread it, but you still have HIV in your system, yet we can spread what we don't have. But the truth is, you don't care about health or well-being of your people. You only care about telling what they should or should not do based on one-sided science. This has all been about control of the masses for the elections, and I'm not falling for it and never have. Romans 16:17-18. Now I urge you brethren, keep your eye on those who caused ascension and hindrances contrary to the teaching which you learned, and turn away from them, for such men are slaves, not of our Lord Jesus Christ, but of their own appetites, and by their smooth and flattering speech they deceive the hearts of the unsuspecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hunter, 5022 North 141st, or 45th, I'm sorry, Street.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to thank the members of the City Council for allowing me to speak today and also for your service to our community. Again, my name is Mary Hunter. I'm a retired healthcare professional that worked for over 14 years as a physical therapist in the field predominantly in North Omaha. My primary concern that I'd like to bring before the City Council to consider is emphasizing that each citizen and family's own personal responsibility would be regarded according to these masks, that we would, as a community and a nation, we've learned a lot about the beginnings of this virus, but we need to ask ourselves a simple question, I believe. Is it our responsibility at this time, given all that we know about governing, to continue to decide the best course of action for our citizens? Or is it better that we allow, in the best interest, families and businesses to make their own choice in this matter? I sincerely believe that our local governing bodies can recommend reasonable guidelines to all our citizenry, and that will allow personal responsibility in regard to face mask-wearing. I think this step away from placing responsibility on our local government entitles and shows respect and fosters better ongoing community relations between all that are concerned. Again, I urge this council to revise the current mandate and have it reflect our personal responsibility and choice as we unite our community under the banner of dignity granted to all citizens. The council, I feel their decision to grant the citizens personal responsibility, I believe it will be an important precedent setting in our neighboring communities to follow. Again, I want to thank you all for your service, sincerely, and your dedication to our community. And again, I want to urge that we take the responsibility upon ourselves as to whether we would decide to wear a face mask out in our community. And as I said, as a retired healthcare worker, I do feel that I am not a personal threat to other people. If I were, I would certainly wear a mask. But in my own estimation and researching evidence out there, multiple evidence, I feel that it isn't taken upon the city council to decide, but upon each citizen to decide for themselves what would be the best course of action for themselves, their family, and their business. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you. David D. Bagley, 4611 South 96th Street, Omaha. Welcome back, Mr. Bagley.
David Bagley, 4611 South 96th Street. I'm here today to present some hard truths and hard data. First, I'll give you the hard data. I have here before you a Douglas County Health Department chart. Since Omaha has adopted the mask mandate, cases have only gone up. If the masks work, that chart would look very, very different. Former New York Times Alex Berenson, New York Times reporter Alex Berenson, has been studying the China virus. He's written extensively about it. He's written three books. He has concluded that masks are worthless virtual signaling. He also says the virus is going to virus. We can't destroy our economy just trying to stop the virus. So we heard from some doctors here this afternoon. I submit that there is another side to this story, and you now have the evidence on that chart showing that the masks have failed to stop the virus. You are the finders of fact on this issue. Hard truths. You may well have been thinking that when you adopted the mask ordinance and extended it, that you as public officials had to appear to be doing something. The hard truth is that you did something, but it simply didn't work. And I ask that you not continue in error. Another hard truth is that former President Trump, with his Operation Warp Speed, allowed our great pharma companies to develop vaccines in record time. And now with President Biden in office, I'm highly confident that we will all be vaccinated quite soon. Former FDA Commissioner Dr. Scott Gottlieb said on CNBC on January 27th that 75 million people could be vaccinated by the end of March, and that's primarily because Johnson &amp; Johnson will have an approved vaccine very soon. Now, I submit to you that the people of Omaha are very smart. That's because they elected all of you. Therefore, give these same people freedom to choose whether to wear a mask or not. In other words, just be pro-choice on this issue. In America, the default option by government should be freedom. Let people decide unless there's a compelling public reason. I submit to you that the evidence established that mask mandate didn't work, and there's no reason to continue it into March or into May. So as a compromise, I ask that you amend it and end the mask mandate on March 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Grindstaff, 3605 South 107th Avenue Circle.
Hi, thank you. A 19th-century folk tale contains the following, and I quote. "They let it be known that they were weavers, and they said they could weave the most magnificent fabrics imaginable. Not only were their colors and patterns uncommonly fine, but their clothes made of this cloth had a wonderful way of becoming invisible to anyone who was unfit for office or who was unusually stupid," end quote. Masks are useless at preventing the spread of COVID-19. This is not my belief. This is an authoritative opinion of many scientists and physicians. A Cambridge University virologist, Dr. Roger Hodgkinson, stated that the notion that masks are effective in preventing viral transmission is, quote, "utterly unfounded public hysteria driven by media and politicians," close quote. No less than authority, Dr. Anthony Fauci said, and I quote, "People should not be walking around wearing masks. It might make them feel better, but it's not providing protection that they think it is," close quote. A Texas-based eye surgeon, Dr. Richard Orso, said, quote, "Regular masks don't work against viruses. I wear a mask so people think I care. I don't wear a mask because they actually work," close quote. Did you catch that? Masks are very useful in engaging people's feelings, for shoring up social taboos, for creating an atmosphere. But in another way to put it, masks are useless in preventing transmission of viral particles, but useful for social engineering. Well, I have quoted a couple of medical authorities, maybe the most authoritative of all the great, Dr. Fauci himself. This, however, will not persuade this body. You have made your decision. The decisions will be based on the say-so of mass media and unelected medical bureaucrats, not what I speak here today. Rather, I believe this little exercise is meant to keep up appearances, to make it look like we live in a place resembling a democratic republic, to appear that facts are objective, that here people are heard. That is decidedly not the situation we're living in. I know that, and I think you know that, too. So why bother speaking here today at all? Well, in 1974, a great Soviet writer and dissident, Alexander Solzhenitsyn, wrote an essay entitled "Live Not by Lies." It is Solzhenitsyn's challenge to his citizens of that decaying empire. He said, and I quote, "The key to our liberation lies in this: not participating in a lie." That a lie might conceal everything, though it might embrace everything. I will not help with that.
Your time's expired, but the rest of your remarks...
It's almost done here. So this is my challenge to myself and to all those present: no longer participate in lies. As you may have guessed, I began my remarks with a quote from Hans Christian Andersen's children's story, "The Emperor's New Clothes." If you are so inclined, and hopefully you are, I ask you read it again and to take its lessons to heart. Not that the emperor was naked, nor that everyone pretended that he was clothed, but that someone finally spoke the truth. Thank you.
Taisha Kosmiki, 8645 Keystone Drive. It's your turn.
Hello. For any public health edict to be effective, credibility by those implementing the measures must be above reproach. Credibility is defined as the quality of being trusted and believed in. Since the mask ordinance was enacted last year, a new level of distrust in our elected officials has been shown, the most glaring and often overlooked being the conflict of interest between Councilman Festerson's employment as CHI Health's Vice President of Strategy and Public Affairs, and his role here on City Council voting in favor of the mask ordinance. According to Nebraska's Political Accountability and Disclosure Act for Elected Officials, Section 49-1499.031A, "An official of a political subdivision designated in Section 49-1493 who would be required to take any action or make any decision in the discharge of his or her duties that may cause financial benefit or detriment to him or her, a member of his or her immediate family or business for which he or she is associated, which is distinguishable from the effects of such action on the public generally or a broad segment of the public, shall take the following actions as he or she is aware of such potential conflict, or should reasonably be aware of such potential conflict, whichever is sooner." And then it goes on to outline the steps to disclose the conflict. To date, Councilman Festerson has not taken those steps. A simple Google search for CHI Omaha mask pulls up numerous mass promotions and events. A reasonable person will acknowledge the potential detriment to Councilman Festerson's employment as Vice President of Strategy and Public Affairs should his vote run in direct opposition to CHI Health's public stance. For this reason, I call upon Councilman Festerson to prepare a written statement describing the nature of his conflict, deliver said statement to the commission as the rules for elected officials instructs, and recuse himself from any vote involving health-related edicts in our community. After all, Councilman Festerson, as recently as May 2020, recused himself from voting on roadwork to be completed in front of CHI, stating that his employment with CHI Health posed a potential conflict. Clearly, voting on healthcare measures while employed by CHI is a conflict. This governing body's credibility with the community will continue to be undermined as long as Councilman Festerson continues to vote on items related to healthcare as an employee of CHI Health, regardless of whether or not there is a pandemic. Thank you.
Cheryl Concanon, 10381 Nebraska Ave.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Concanon. First of all, hello to the Omaha City Council members elected and appointed. Thank you for your service. I'm not going to sit here and spew any of the numbers and facts and figures. We've all heard them. Not everybody listens, but we've all heard them. I don't know about you, but I'm kind of tired about this. We've been at this for almost a year, this China virus farce, and what do we have? What I see, fear and division. I've been blessed or cursed with more common sense than most, so I have to use this when I look at the experts on both sides. And I can tell you that when I'm looking at this, if it doesn't make sense, generally, I'm not going to go back and listen to you again. Can take, for example, Dr. Fauci. He reminds me somewhat of a ball in a pinball machine. He changes his mind, generally depending on who's paying him that day. You know, if you don't agree with me, that's fine. Prove me wrong. I've not worn a mask because I cannot wear one. Oddly enough, I've not gotten sick either. I know zero people who have died from the China virus. I know less than a dozen people who have actually had it. My mother is one of them. She just turned 79. She was sick for about three days, and she was kind of weak for maybe another, yeah, kind of weak for another week or so. But she is a very active woman. She's on no medications. She's still on the farm. She cuts her own wood. I mean, she's not afraid of getting sick. The doctor that spoke earlier, he indicated that we need to be more proactive, and I completely agree with him. But as far as being proactive, I'm talking about the immune system, vitamins, exercise, what we eat, what we drink. Are you going to mandate those? Are you going to ban alcohol, smoking? Where are we going to draw the line, especially if you keep moving the goalposts? My final question to each of you, when are you going to start mandating personal responsibility? Oh, wait, never mind. That comes from our Lord. Thank you.
Barbara Hart, 955 North Linden Street, Wahoo.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Hart, 955 North Linden Street, Wahoo, Nebraska. I used to come to Omaha probably three to four times a week for everything we needed: groceries, clothing, home repair supplies, fine dining, et cetera. But I no longer feel safe in your city because of the mass shaming and the bullying. You've actually created a war zone for us. This has emboldened people who feel that it is their right or their duty to bully those without a mask. You, as a city council, have a responsibility to all citizens, to keep them safe, not to mention businesses who have been hurt by this government overreach of our freedoms. Don't you have a responsibility to all the businesses that are declining? Please do not think that without a mask mandate, people will not be safe. When we lifted the government mandate of all the citizens of Wahoo, Blair, Papillion, Beatrice, and some of the others, people still continued to stay safe, but the divisiveness and the bullying stopped. That is exactly what I saw in Wahoo on December 22nd, when we lifted the mandate. The environment of our little city completely changed. Was now free to go to the grocery store. You were free to go to the Dollar General. We became a community again. I am asking for this city council to be real leaders today. Open up your great city and trust your citizens and err on the side of liberty for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Stangle, 6944 County Road, P-39, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. For those of you who don't know that area, it's a great place to ride a bike or motorcycle in the hills of Fort Calhoun.
I would agree. Thank you. Thank you for your time this afternoon and allowing me to speak. I am an opponent to the mask mandate, and I also, at the same time, you know, hear a lot of different opinions and statistics on masks in particular. I, for one, do believe that masks exist for a purpose, and have a purpose, and have a function, and can be useful. My personal choice is that I will wear a mask around high-risk individuals in their private settings, and that's a decision that I've made in spite of maybe contradicting evidence that my side or the opponent's side would maybe bring to the table. So, how did I arrive at a conclusion like that even though my side would say masks don't work? There's extremes on either case, and I don't really envy your position in having to wade through all those. I find it very interesting to probably have to wade through all of our opinions. But zooming out, I zoom out so I can try to gain some perspective. Can I ask a question of the council? What's the population of the Omaha metro?
Under the rules of the debate, the council does not entertain questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I did not intend to debate you.
The population of the city is a little over 450,000.
Thank you. Thank you. The city itself proper is 450,000. The metro, 900,000. So, the city, 450,000. 450,000 people is the number of alleged U.S. deaths from COVID, and that seems like a large number. Does the city of Omaha seem like a large number in comparison to the country? The D.C. metro area is 5 million people. 5 million people in the D.C. metro area, and in January alone, 5 million people have died in the world. There are 150,000 deaths in the world, COVID or not, per day. And so, just gaining some perspective on that, masks or no mask, COVID didn't kill 5 million people. And even though I love numbers and I'm a mechanical and nuclear engineer, that's, I won't get into the statistics of it because of time for sure, but 10 out of 10 people die. And with that being said, we heard an urge to put politics aside while advocating a political mandate, but that's contradictory. I gain perspective on the impact of COVID on the population of the world, on the number of people who die in the world, and I don't lack for compassion when it comes to deaths. But as we've heard before, the cure cannot be worse than the illness itself, and we've seen detrimental impacts to our society and detrimental impacts to our communities. I want to end on a positive note and applaud the community of Blair for voting against the mask mandate and urge you to also do the same.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Ally French, 4213 North 172nd Street. Welcome back, Ms. French.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Ally French. I am the founder and leader of Nebraskans Against Government Overreach. With over 4,000 members majorly in the Omaha area, we oppose another extension of the non-pharmaceutical medical mandate that you've imposed on our community, effectively practicing medicine without a license. It's only a matter of time before the damage and injury that masking causes, for which we won't understand the full effects for years to come, will land squarely back at your feet. With the recent revelations of the fantastic Fauci, might I recommend that you instead introduce a resolution that guides those whom are especially vulnerable or concerned to wear the 90% effective three layers of mask, as it is in the best interest of the economy, educational system, hospitals, and business owners to have that level of self-protection, without the ultimatum of criminalizing those whom cannot or choose not to wear a mask and allow society to reopen at a full capacity. I furthermore make this recommendation. It has been made clear at the recent press release given by Adipour Ph.D. and Mayor Gene Stothard that while today, the city council intends to extend to May 25th, an obvious political tool, by the way, that they have stated that masking shall continue until 70% to 75% of our community is vaccinated, which will take at least a year. Seeing as this council has made it abundantly clear that we will follow Adipour and the corrupt UNMC off a cliff before going against their advice, this change in goalpost should require an entirely new ordinance to be introduced. The expert worship this council has befallen to can only be explained by monetary incentive or the programmed ignorance meant to control the masses. It isn't science because they say so. It is only science if it can be tested and when the results are statistically significant and reproducible. Rather, your advisors often respond with, "I don't know. I haven't seen that. That's not true." Here's a cutesy meme or meaningless manipulated graph that only tells the narrative I'd like you guys to believe, and of course, the abundance of anecdotal evidence, all of course, based on absolutely fraudulent testing. However, when it comes down to it, the most important thing for this council to bear in mind is the deeply held religious conviction that no mask, no shot, no pill, no man can stop a virus, can enhance, or do better than God's design, that to attempt to do so is a sin and against the will of God. And before the ridiculous rebuttal is made that God gave us smart scientists and doctors, let it be known that is a complete cop-out. It is nothing more than a line of propaganda fed to society for several decades to erode Christianity and promote the medical mafia. For this council to mandate a non-pharmaceutical intervention that violates my religious beliefs is an absolute violation of the Omaha Charter, the Nebraska Constitution, and the U.S. Constitution. If this council insists on extending this already unconstitutional mandate, and you do not provide us with a religious and philosophical exemption, you will be providing the entire Christian community the means to sue the city, and certainly a darn good reason to ensure your political career and community ties ends here, as you've made it obvious that you don't care if you ruin the livelihoods of our community. Thank you.
Gwendolyn Litsen, 14606 Boyd Plaza.
She just went to change my baby's diaper.
All right. We'll call up Mr. Larry Storer, 5015 Lafayette Avenue.
Thank you. I, of course, am against this ordinance, and I think it's because there's just an awful lot of disagreement as to who's correct, who isn't, who's a scientist, who isn't, who's a doctor, who isn't. Dr. Fauci himself changed his mind about masks now. The other day, he was going to force us to wear double masks. Now, he's changed his mind about that. I compromise. I sometimes wear it like that, but I refuse to continue breathing my own carbon dioxide because I don't want to pass out at the podium. If this is a democracy, as many of you and other bodies in Omaha, as well as down at the state, refer to us as a democracy, our democracy, then you must pass, not pass this, because the majority in this room, obviously, are against masks. They showed up again. Most of them haven't been here for quite a while, but they haven't succumbed to it. They haven't died. I recognize a lot of them. So, some of the facts that have been presented here must be wrong. And I haven't passed away yet. I don't cover my nose most of the time. So, vote no, because the majority here says to vote no. There might be more of them on the Zoom, but Zoom doesn't make it right either, does it? I don't know that that's officially law yet either. If science and progressives are so smart, why haven't they solved it by now? Or is this just a method of controlling the population until they have enough power to completely take it over and make it a formal democracy, and then slide downhill from there? To what, a totalitarianship? That easily fails, as I'm told the body that met here in the morning. It's facts. You can read it. I gave them some copies to admit to the words that I did use. But we have a newspaper article here that talks about all the variant strains, all these variant strains from all these countries. Excuse me, did we not shut down our borders, or can we not shut down the borders? How come we don't know about those variant strains until now? Somebody isn't reporting all the facts, or we don't know what the facts are. Very common sense. We're not ready for it. We're not ready for a nationwide, yeah, that's another reason. You don't have to vote for this because the new administration probably going to do it for you. So, let him do it. Let him take the fall for it. Let the public here that's in majority be your guide. But then, if you're a republic, you can take responsibility and vote for it, and then we can all vote you out. And I finally want to say, I guess I misunderstand some of your rules, because earlier part of the meetings, or another time in the meetings, nobody's allowed to go one iota over the yellow line, or the yellow mark, or the red, before they're interrupted. And if they continue speaking like I am right now, you signal the deputy to escort them out of the room. I think that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Some of you people have the responsibility to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Today's your day. You had 51 seconds over, Mr. Storer, and you didn't get kicked out like you did this morning. Gwendolyn Litsen, 14606 Boyd Plaza.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Litsen. I don't have a lot to add today. I think the speakers have been absolutely fantastic. I counted about 140 people in the room when we started, and I would say 40 of them were wearing masks. That's something the audience probably can't tell. I feel like, and I told you guys back in August, that I felt like this particular mask mandate was a fig leaf, that it was just political cover for you guys so that you could appear like you were doing something. And I would say that the fact that the cases didn't come down immediately after the mandate went in is a very good illustration that the mask mandate doesn't work. And I also want to throw out there that because of the built-in weaknesses of the mandate, because of the exemptions and the carve-outs, which I have done everything I can to share with the community, I go freely everywhere without a mask, and I don't get harassed. Now, I know that there are people who are experiencing harassment, because we see the videos online, although I try to stay away from online videos. The point I'm trying to make is, I have carved out my little life, and so, I know the stores in Omaha where I can go without a mask. I know I make long trips to Papillion and Blair to stay away from Omaha businesses if I don't know that I can go in safely. And you guys have given the appearance of doing something. It's been going on for, what are we at, six months since August? Please just let the mandate expire. That's all I'm asking.
Denise Bradshaw, 1725 Bowie Drive.
Good afternoon. Due to the mask mandate enacted in August, I have personally chosen to take most of my retail shopping out of Omaha into Sarpy County and onto online stores. So, instead of going to Petco on 72nd and Dodge or other pet boutique stores, I have now moved all of my pet purchases to Chewy, because it saves me time and money. And since August, I have spent $1,300 with Chewy. I did not spend that $1,300 in Omaha. Instead of shopping at Von Mauer and the Bookworm, I now shop with Amazon. Again, it saves me time and money. And since August, I have spent $1,400 with Amazon. I didn't spend that $1,400 in Omaha. I now buy my groceries at the Walmart in Papillion, an easy drive down 72nd Street. So, instead of spending $2,100 since August at the Peony Park Hy-Vee, I spent that $2,100 in Papillion. Additionally, I have taken my pharmacy business out of Hy-Vee to an online store. So, right now, we're looking at myself alone, right at $5,000 I have drained out of the Omaha economy, and will continue to do so while the mask mandate is in force. And if you think I am the only one doing this, you are sadly mistaken. Soon, I'll be needing new glasses and contacts. I don't know the total cost, but it'll be in the hundreds of dollars, and those hundreds of dollars will be spent in Papillion. Gardening season will soon be upon us, and over the years, I have enjoyed mall halls more than I can even express. But I now found yesterday an online gardening store, and I'll be taking my business there. I will not be shopping at mall halls. So, as you can see, this orchestrated obedience forced upon us by the city council, Gene Stothard, and Adipour has caused a financial negative impact to the city of Omaha, because I am the consumer. I have the power of the per- I have the power of the purse. I have options. Those brick and mortars that I mentioned, Bookworm, Von Mauer, they don't. Mall halls doesn't. They are depending on me to show up and buy. And then as long as this mask mandate continues, this lifelong Omaha will be taking her business elsewhere. Thank you.
Reagan Simons, 6161 South 182nd Streets.
It's Reagan, but that's close enough. Good afternoon, City Council members. Whenever there is a risk, there must be a choice. Masks make healthy people sick. Imagine a disease so deadly, so horrible, you must have a swab shoved up your nose, almost to your brain, to find out if you even have it, because you don't have symptoms. Add that, add to that a 99% recovery rate, and I feel like I'm taking crazy pills with you guys. What is it going to take for the madness to end? We're not really talking about masks and if they work or not, are we? We're also not talking about the fact that masks have real physical and emotional side effects on perfectly healthy little kids forced to wear them for seven to 10 hours per day, or how our children are bearing the brunt of the restrictions, even though they're not the ones dying. They're not the ones getting sick. They're not the ones transmitting this disease. Other large cities like Nashville and Denver exempt children. We are not talking, we're not talking about how unethical it is for a doctor, City Council, or Board of Health to force a healthy person to wear a mask that could make them sick, yet refuses to tell them about the importance of vitamin D, sunshine, fresh air, and a healthy diet. We're not talking about the psychological impact of telling little children that they are dirty and they have the potential to kill grandma or their teacher with a single touch. Or that if you took the time to swab their mask after a school day, you'll see a whole host of disgusting little things, including E. coli staff, on the inside of their mask, sitting on their precious lips, as seen here in these Petri dish. I've shared these with you guys before. One helpful individual pointed out at another meeting, "Well, yeah, of course they're dirty, but swab any surface, a doorknob, a phone, a urinal, you'll get the same effect. There's bacteria everywhere." Okay, that might be true, but I would hope that you would not want the bacteria from a urinal sitting on a five-year-old's face all day. Part of the problem is that people who are in favor of making it illegal to have a face in Omaha are not the ones forced to wear a mask all day. How do you, how long do you sit in your mask, City Council members? Maybe here and there for a meeting or two, or run to the store. But I guarantee you don't sit in then for seven to 10 hours a day like little kids, five days a week, with no breaks, like the children of Omaha do. I challenge you all to do that. As you prepare for next week's meeting, I challenge you to sit in your mask for seven to 10 hours a day. Sit in your muzzle and do not remove it except to eat a 20-minute lunch. After that, I have another assignment for you. You've all seen my Petri dish experiment. I challenge you to do the experiment yourself. I brought extras for you. You ordered these online. But I digress. What we're really talking about today is making it illegal for free citizens to breathe fresh air. We don't need the government to micromanage and threaten citizens. That's not why you were elected. Most people will wear a mask without government overreach. Some people can't or should not wear a mask, but need to be able to move freely in society. Don't fool yourselves. It's not about health and public safety. If it was, you would outlaw the real killers of your constituents, smoking, drinking, and donuts. Whenever there is a risk, there should be a choice. Masks make healthy people sick, and you guys need to stop with the mandates.
Mary Height Camp, 4865 F Road, Dunbar. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council members. I am from Dunbar, Nebraska. I do have multiple family members that live here. I used to shop here. I do go to Bellevue and Papillion now. I want to talk today about the PCR testing that is currently being used to confirm the so-called cases in this city, these numbers contributing to your decisions regarding mask mandates. PCR testing takes a swab sample of DNA, runs it through cycles of preset amplification, making the RNA particles bigger than they are. PCR tests cannot distinguish between live viruses, leftover or dead nucleotides, or particles of any past coronavirus, including the common cold, which is from the same family. These, as well as antibodies to past infections, other viruses, bacteria, or even the flu, can be found. But these types of things, although rendering a positive test, cannot make you infectious nor infect others. Multiple scientific papers have confirmed these errors. Fauci himself, in a video interview, said anything over 35 amplification is inaccurate. The CDC admits the likelihood of detecting live, transmittable viruses in cycles above 30 to be statistically nil. Yet the PCR cycle rate used across the world is 40. Higher amplification results in testing that is hypersensitive. The New York Times described this as being akin to finding a hair from an individual long after the person has left the room, then claiming it as proof the entire person is still there. So what constitutes a case? The CDC has provided very clear definition, and a positive test result alone is not sufficient to be classified a case. There are additional criteria that must be met, but are being ignored entirely by public health officials across the country, including Adipour, who has instead used positive test result and case interchangeably, as if they were synonymous, but they are not. I have a number of questions for you. Do you even know the cycle threshold that is being used at the different labs in Omaha? Has Adipour ever been required to give that information, and if not, why not? Who knows what cycle threshold is being used? It could be 35. It could be 40, for all we know. We must have transparent and verifiable information. What did, why did the initial narrative change from death rate to number of cases? Even with the rise of cases, which now is going down, the death rate is still incredibly low. I did the numbers just yesterday. Anyone can find them. Even with inaccurate test results, the death rate still sits at below 1%, and that is comparable to the yearly influenza and is the number that matters. As far as decreases in the numbers now, the normal course of a virus is to weaken, and herd immunity happens. If you truly care about the health of people in Omaha, then demand to know this number that is being used for these PCR tests. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a number of people register to speak by video conference, and since they've been waiting patiently, I'm going to call on a half dozen or so. Kathleen Kouth, from 6103 South 178th Street. Kathleen, you're recognized.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Kouth, and I'm at 6103 South 178th Street. And I oppose the mask mandate, and I would ask that you allow it to expire. As Adipour said, November was the worst month ever for COVID. And that was a full three months after the mask mandate started. So I don't know that they have any direct ties that masks are doing what they say they're supposed to be doing. My concern is that government does not need to be reaching into individuals' health choices. By making a blanket mandate about health for individuals, you're saying that everyone has the same health parameters to start with, and that's simply not true. We've heard people talk about the divisiveness that occurs. And as a conflict coach and mediator, I deal with that all the time. And as someone who cannot wear a mask, because I blackout when I do, I deal with that as well. When I go to stores, I very often have to explain to people my personal health information. And that's uncomfortable. I do it because I don't want people thinking that I'm disregarding humanity or that I have some sense of entitlement. And that's what's happened. By making this a mandate, by making this something that is enforceable with ordinances, people assume that they have the right to intrude on other people's personal health decisions. So I'm asking that the City Council just allow this to expire and see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Cummins, 5025 South 107th Street.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to have to get your microphone closer to you. Samantha. We're going to come back to you, Samantha, because there's a problem with your microphone. Lacey Hughes, 653 South 212th Street. Go ahead, Lacey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is my volume at an appropriate level?
Yes.
Okay, great. A lot of really fantastic points have been brought about. I really urge the council members to look into the points that are being brought out, especially about the PCR test cycles. The point that I would like to bring forward today is talking briefly about how the virus is actually spread. So I am on the Nebraska Medicine website. And the question, frequently asked question is, "How does the virus spread?" So I just want to read the synopsis here. So it says, "This virus probably originally emerged from an animal source, but now is able to spread from person to person. Coronaviruses generally spread by respiratory droplets generated when a sick person coughs or sneezes. Coronaviruses may survive on surfaces that have been contaminated with respiratory secretions. Thus, contaminated surfaces may be another less common route of transmission. It should be noted that common disinfectants kill the coronavirus on surfaces." So tying that back into children being in school, children not being a vector for this, for this virus to spread to their teachers or grandma and grandpa at home, it just hasn't been, it just hasn't been proven that children are major risk factors in this virus at all. So why in the world are we still requiring children to wear masks for five to seven hours a day while at school interacting with their peers? I really want to encourage you guys to really look at what doctors are saying as far as the psychological, like the psych- the psychological detriment to children. When you have parents that are so fearful that they are literally teaching their children to fear people that don't have masks on, let's just take a moment and think about the psychological repercussions for that child as they grow up and have to function healthily in a society when it comes to illnesses later on in life, when it comes to relationships later on in life. If somebody, if a child, and it's, and if you hear it at one time, it's not just happening for one child. You didn't just happen to hear that, that one child that was, you know, that has been psychologically prepped by their parents to actually fear people with no masks. When you have children fearing people who look like me instead of this, that's a real problem for society. So I really urge the council members to look at the psychological detriment that having masks in schools are doing to children. Something else, so, so back to the Nebraska Medicine.
Your time's expired.
It's talking about droplets.
Lacey, your time's expired.
Okay, thank you.
You're free to submit the rest of your remarks.
Okay, can I just, can I just, real quick? I'm sorry.
You're free to submit the remainder of your remarks by email. And they will be made a part of the record. We're going back to Samantha Cummins, 5025 South 107th Street.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful. Okay, Samantha Cummins is my name. During questions asked last Tuesday during the COVID update, Adipour was asked how many people need to be vaccinated for her to stop asking for mandates or even recommending masks to be worn. She said 70% of people over the age of 16 must be vaccinated before we can get back to, quote, "kind of a normal life." What happens if a whopping 90% of the population is vaccinated? We may or may not get rid of the mask mandate? What do we do about the thousands of visitors in Omaha? Or say, somebody coming over from Papillion to work in Omaha? Doesn't that change our percentages? What happens if the infection rates drop immensely related to the vaccine or the mask or anything? Will the mandate still be required? Adi was asked when we can get to that 70% of vaccination rate that she would like to see for us to stop wearing masks. Her answer was, "At this rate, more than a year." She noted that there are no set promises to speed up the vaccination. That's unbelievable. To top it off, last Tuesday and just a few moments ago, Adi noted that we have no idea if the vaccine prevents transmission or how long immunity lasts if it does work. Last Tuesday, Nebraska Medicine posted on Facebook reiterated this, says masks still need to be worn after vaccination because research is not complete on whether vaccinated individuals may still be able to pass on COVID to others even if they don't experience symptoms. Today, Adi was asked by Chairwoman Borgeson about the three new strains from the other countries. She said that the information is that both Pfizer and the Moderna protect against these, against these new strains, but then continued to say that we need to vaccinate ASAP and continue wearing masks because we don't know. Take note of Adi's inconsistencies when you're allowing her to advise you to choose mandates for us, please. Masks work, and they're our saviors, but why are we talking about vaccines if the masks work so well? Beyond thinking it's ridiculous to literally mask your problems rather than face true health, I'm furious that our freedoms keep getting pulled from us. Telling us we're going to return to a new norm, or return to normal post-vaccination aren't even going to happen. I'm furious that because of your mandate, we have to pull our daughter from school because the moment she turns five, she must see masks segregated and her oxygen cut off in order to learn next to her four-year-old peers. Regarding masks, vaccines, or whatever, whatever is recommended next, what about the risks? Adi has not mentioned a single risk. Isn't that odd? Our freedoms should never be held hostage with a medical choice. Where there's risk, there must be choice. You keep making these mandates longer because you're tired of hearing from us, and you're tired of addressing these issues. Even if the mask mandate goes away, people are still going to wear these masks. They're terrified. They're probably going to wear them till the day that they die. My husband couldn't speak today because he's deployed in Japan, otherwise he would be speaking. And while he's out there, he's enraged that he is working to defend the rights that you're pulling away from his family back home. I pray that you're listening to me and everybody else speaking today because quite honestly, it feels like our words fall on deaf ears with the City Council. I said it before and I'll say it again to those willing to throw away your rights or even temporarily set them aside for the false sense of security, until you wake up to what's going on, we're going to keep fighting for you too. Edmund Burke once said, "The only thing necessary for advancement of evil is for good men to do nothing." Please pay attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time's expired. Brittany Bundy, 5724 South 107th Street. Go ahead, Brittany. Unmute yourself, Brittany.
Can I get called upon in about, just a little later? I'm just talking in the car.
We'll come back to you. Jennifer, Jennifer Rosa, 8932 North 170th Street.
Hello?
It's your turn, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you. My name's Jennifer Rosa. I'm opposed to the mask mandate, and I'd like to go over a couple of numbers related to masks. I've emailed you guys this before, but I just want to go on record saying it. So an aerosol, aerosolized COVID particle is .06 to .13 nanometers in size. The N95 masks that medical professionals wear are filtering particles as small as .3 nanometers, so over twice the size of a COVID molecule, thus making them ineffective. If N95 cannot prevent these COVID molecules from escaping any lower level, including the ever-so-popular cloth masks that everyone wear, are useless against aerosolized COVID molecules. Dr. Khan pointed out today that the UK is switching their citizens to N95 masks. Why is that? Why? Perhaps because masks don't work, especially Level 1 and cloth masks. At my house currently right now, I have a box of surgical Level 3 masks in front of me. All of them are individually wrapped to protect them from infection or to, to maintain an aseptic environment. And I can email pictures of the, to the clerk. But on my box, it quite literally says that these masks are only tested masks are only tested in lab settings, not clinical settings, not settings that we're all wearing them out in public, touching our face, pulling them down, wearing them under our nose. It also has a specific warning on the box that states, and I quote, "This mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection." It also says in the warning box that these are for adults only. That's all I wanted to add today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Ludwig, 5907 Pacific Street. You're recognized, Heidi.
Okay. So my name is Heidi and I left allopathic medicine many years ago for homeopathic medicine and am board certified through the Board of Natural Health Sciences. I could stand up here and talk about the science, how the virus particles are so small, they're easily passed through masks, rendering them ineffective at preventing the spread of coronavirus. I could talk about the negative health implications caused by mask wearing such as increased risk of infection, the spread of viral illness, impaired immune system, hindered detoxification that occurs via exhalation, headaches, skin infections, staph infections, bacterial infections, and other physical and emotional and psychological effects. Or just the simple fact, sorry. Or the simple fact that mask wearing reduces blood and tissue oxygenation, which combined with increased carbon dioxide levels can be deadly. Or I could cite the two recent studies, the first out of Wuhan, China, which screened nearly 10 million residents, and the second from the University of Florida on December 22nd of 2020, which found no asymptomatic or presymptomatic spread. But instead, I want to talk about discrimination. I have a medical exemption. I have a copy handy on my phone to show any business who requests to see it. But what I'm finding is businesses don't want to see it. Instead, they would rather tell me I'm not allowed in their store. I'm told they're just following the rules. So I've had police called on my children and I simply for buying groceries or running errands. Instead, I'm receiving threats from other customers when out in public. It's embarrassing and it's wrong. Never in my life would I have imagined this is the world I'm raising my children in. I would have hoped the city of Omaha would have more faith in its residents and would stop trying to divide us further. It's unethical and unconstitutional to force healthy citizens to abide by measures that can result in physical or emotional harm and then impinge on their ability to move freely throughout society without discrimination. For those with deeply held religious beliefs, masks mandates violate their ability to abide by natural law and follow convictions to walk in faith, not fear. As such, the decision to wear a mask is a highly personal one and should not be universally mandated. Measures that are meant to protect the community as a whole are ineffective if they hurt individuals in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now return to live testimony in the room. Brittany Alexandra, 1105 Gold Coast Road, Papillion. We'll come back. Amanda Cameron, 413 North 39th Street. Amanda?
Hi, I'm Amanda Cameron, 413 North 39th Street. Mask mandates are what governments do when they don't know what to do, but they feel they need to be seen doing something. And I get it, it's really, really comforting. The illusion of control is really, really comforting, but it's an illusion. We saw that. Adipour mentioned the spikes in November. Well, they look an awful lot like the same spikes we saw in South Dakota, which does not have a mask mandate. They look like the spikes we saw in California and New York, which are locked down and masked up and their cases are going crazy. We don't have control and play acting is not going to help anybody. So a lot of people have mentioned the WHO PCR information was updated. I have a copy of that notice and I want to draw your attention to a particular piece that says, "A weak positive where test results do not correspond with the clinical presentation, a new specimen should be taken and retested and healthcare providers must consider any result in combination with the timing of the sampling, clinical observations, patient history, and confirmed status of any contacts." So a positive test in addition to symptoms equals a positive case, not just a positive test equals a positive case. So what are we doing with this? Are we changing our metrics at all? Is the health department updating anything? And if not, why not? I think we deserve to have that question answered because it seems kind of important. Think of everything that has changed in the last year. First, it was don't wear a mask, you're stupid for doing so, then it was wear a mask, now it's two masks. Oh, but Fauci already walked that back. It was locked down to slow the spread, but now lockdowns don't work. It was clean every surface completely because the virus could stay on cardboard for days or any surface. And now we know that's not true and we've been told to stop the manic cleaning. We also know from a study in Denmark specifically on surgical masks that you're just as likely to get COVID wearing a mask as not. So what stats are you guys using when you consider these mask mandates? Are you using the same ones that were set in place a year ago? And we've been doing the same thing for a year and we're not changing our stats because we've already got the dashboards made? Or are you changing with all the new information that comes out? That is a question to ask because look at everything that has changed. So if your stats are still the same, you, everybody deserves to know why. And more than that, guys, there's always going to be a new crisis. There's always this and that and the other thing and oh God, the waves are coming and we're all going to drown. You can't keep it dialed up to 11 forever. You just can't. If everything is a crisis, nothing is a crisis. So please, just end the mask mandate.
Thank you. Brittany Alexandra, 1105 Gold Coast Road, Papillion.
Sorry about that. Okay. Omaha, we're back, but why are we here? You do know that the testing is faulty. The CDC now groups influenza, COVID, pneumonia altogether, and that is called a PIC. So how can we tell a positive COVID case when the COVID test is not just testing for COVID? And as for hospital rooms, I recently had a family member go to the hospital, not due to COVID, but due to another emergency reason. She was placed on the COVID floor taking up a room for a day when she had tested negative before entering. And then she was placed elsewhere. So for when you just took up a bed for a COVID case for no reason, yet she was on the COVID floor, that's just weird and odd. Maybe it's because UNMC gets $378,000 per COVID patient. Also, I have been to just about every mandate meeting around Nebraska since we've last seen you guys. I don't know what this means, but I find it very interesting. Wahoo and Blair did not pass a mandate. I know speaking to a Blair council members afterwards, they said it felt as if that was a government overreach and it is not their job to tell you what to do with your body. But what is odd is Wahoo received $185,000 and Blair didn't even apply for the COVID relief fund and didn't apply for a local government reimbursement program. And they didn't approve a mandate. And Douglas County has received $166 million. December 22nd, UNMC came out saying vitamin C, vitamin D, zinc, and oregano, none of these supplements have shown efficiency against COVID-19. So if you'd like to take supplemental vitamins, check with your primary care provider first. If you take too much of anything, there's a risk, says Dr. Swindles. And she also said, "Wear a mask, stay away from people when you can, wash your hands, and get a vaccine when someone offers it to you." Yet vitamin D deficiency on admission to hospital was associated with the 3.7-fold increase in the odds of dying from COVID-19. Nearly 60% of patients with COVID were vitamin D deficient upon hospitalization. With men in the advanced stages of COVID-19, were showing pneumonia. This was led by Dieter D. Schmidt, MD from Belgium. And I'm also confused because 80 to 90% of people who are in the hospital with COVID are overweight. So like we've been saying for the past nine months, let's mandate a healthy living and vitamins. It's almost as if we're more worried about money than we are one's health. And to Adipour, if you're going to bring up vaccines, why don't we take a look at the VAERS reports just from Nebraska since your vaccine had started? So where's the pandemic in those?
Thank you. Paula Williams, 2511 North 52nd.
Hello, my name is Paula Williams. This feels kind of intense, huh? And you know, I didn't come with a prepared thing and statements and research and documents and numbers and everything because I knew other people would have that on both sides, you know? For it works and it doesn't work. And I think it's really interesting that we tend to uphold, at least it's appearing that you're tending to uphold one type of science, one type of view of science and statistics and doctors. Because there are many doctors, many famous, very well-known doctors decrying that masks don't work, that they actually increase contamination, that it's very psychologically damaging to adults and children. Can you imagine what that's going to be like for a child? To be terrified of other people that don't wear a mask? That is traumatic and lifelong lasting. There are very real consequences to this mask mandate that we must look into critically. This is really serious. I don't think it's like, like pro, like the whole anti-vax thing, like just, I am so not anxious to get a pharmaceutical prophylactic at all. Neither is my family, my loved ones, or my children. No, thank you. I'm not interested in ingesting antibacterial, antifungal, monkey kidney cells, aborted fetal cells through my blood-brain barrier. I'm not interested in that. And that's my choice. If that is someone else's choice to do, absolutely, you should do it. So I really urge you to take a long, hard look at what are the consequences of this mask mandate. Thank you so much.
Natalie Newman, 4858 North 162nd Street.
Hello, my name is Natalie. I'm here in opposition of the mask mandate extension. This is my first time speaking here and honestly, I would rather be home with my baby. I'm here because your guys' votes have impacted my family. I can go on and on about facts and statistics. That should be all that matters, but somehow, real numbers and statistics aren't making a difference. So instead, I'll tell you about my family. I have an 11-year-old and a one-year-old. We are in the Omaha Public School System. At the end of the summer, my husband and I had to decide whether our 11-year-old would be masked for eight hours a day or stuck in front of a screen for eight hours a day. Neither choice was going to work for us, so we started looking at private schools. Because of the original mask mandate, the optional mask policy in the private school system became a mandatory one. So here we are. My family is spending $654 a month so my son can take his mask off while socially distancing at his desk. We are paying $654 a month so my 11-year-old can breathe for at least some of the day. We aren't rich and this money could be going towards our kids' higher education. Instead, we are buying oxygen with it. But what about those kids that can't afford that? We are the lucky ones. So is the price that we are paying to make people feel better worth the price our children are paying? I'm pleading with each and every one of you to vote against this. Thank you.
Jennifer Hicks, 73274 644 Road, Peru, Nebraska.
Okay, my name is Jennifer Hicks and I'd like to share this.
But the one thing historically people need to realize, that even if there is some asymptomatic transmission, in all the history of respiratory-borne viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks. The driver of outbreaks is always a symptomatic person.
This statement is from Dr. Fauci, strongly refutes the argument that masks are needed to prevent asymptomatic spread. But it also serves as one of many examples in which we're being asked to go down a dangerous path of forgetting our history. Many attempts have been made to rewrite history throughout this past year. We've been asked to forget claims previously made by Fauci insisting that masks don't work to prevent the spread of a virus. We've been asked to forget how the history of, how masks have been used in the healthcare profession for decades, which is in stark contrast to how we're now being told to use them. We've also been told to forget that hydroxychloroquine has a history of safe use for half a century. This erasure of history that we're being asked to accept is something that everyone should find alarming. Many in the medical community also seem to have forgotten that death is a natural and inevitable part of life and that there are indeed other causes of death besides COVID. In fact, some of them are a direct result of how we have responded to COVID. Instead of taking an approach of focused protection, which would protect the most vulnerable while still allowing life for others to continue uninterrupted, we have instead been advised to follow restrictive social control measures which have led to loss of life from suicide and reductions in access to healthcare. It has been extremely irresponsible for public health professionals to have spent the last year insisting that masks now have protective qualities that we have known for decades. They do not. We are being asked to take seriously some sort of fluid interpretation of science that only seems to be whatever some privileged expert or non-expert such as Bill Gates says it is. From 30 days to stop the spread, to flattening the curve, to don't wear a mask, to do wear a mask, heck, wear three or four. Fauci himself, the leading expert, has told us that in all of history, viral outbreaks were never caused by those who did not show symptoms. That means that your mask actually doesn't protect you and mine, protect me and mine does not protect you. So what is this really about? And where does it end? The science du jour now tells us that the final solution has arrived in the form of an experimental vaccine that has no proven history of safety or effectiveness. We all just need to wait a little longer and keep wearing a mask. The city council may claim that it is science that is guiding this mask mandate, but the fact of the matter is that science seems to be whatever a privileged view says it is and their advice has been anything but consistent. I would like to finish with a quote that has been attributed to George Orwell. He said, "The most effective way to destroy people is to deny and obliterate their own understanding of their history." When the advice that is guiding the COVID response is often run in direct opposition to the history of science as we have known it for decades, then we should try to be skeptical of that advice and we certainly shouldn't rely upon it to impose a mask mandate. Thank you.
Do Logan and Asher wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
Come on down. Same address, are you Logan or Asher?
I'm Logan, sir.
Logan Hicks, same address.
All right. Many who support the mandated wearing of masks have pointed at the existing legislation that exists regarding seat belts and traffic laws. They're not the same. The risk of harm in the event of an accident is the reason that people would willingly wear seat belts even if they weren't mandated. Same is true for speed limits, traffic signals, stop lines, don't drive drunk. People don't do that just because it's common sense, not just because it's the law. Failure to do so could result in real and obvious risks to themselves, their property, other people. Like a car wreck, hitting a pedestrian, damaging the vehicle. There's little dispute that those are very likely consequences of failure to comply with those laws. But you have no such proof that masks are going to do the same thing with COVID. The risks of not wearing a mask are not at all apparent or proven, or something that people would do if they weren't told to do so and made to. In fact, November 19th article from Nebraska Medicine states that were masks been mandated, COVID cases have actually gone up. I find it personally offensive that when it is suggested that my choice not to wear a mask is a sign of lack of compassion for my fellow humans. If we're to believe that circumstances are as bad as we're being told, isn't it a far worse lack of compassion to allow an exemption for team sports during a pandemic? Clearly, these, you guys don't believe that this is honestly killing people and that masks are going to save this if you're going to let team sports continue. These people are gathering in huddles, they're not wearing masks, they're close together, but you're letting them do this anyway. If anyone else did that under your law, you'd be freaking out. Furthermore, Omaha's going to lose money if you continue with this. In all the small towns around here, people are going to shop where there are no mask mandates as opposed to coming to Omaha. The shops in our stores are almost empty just from the huge amount of people. just from the huge amount of people that are leaving Omaha to shop where there are no masks. It's a circumstance of satisfying wants rather than needs. Mask exemptions for team sports are an arbitrary and very discriminatory enforcement of the mandate. You have a responsibility to ensure that you're acting in good faith and with equal protection to all. The exemptions written into the mandate are in direct contradiction to the purpose and goal, and the facts show that this mask mandate is not just. I personally will not follow your or any other mask mandate. Thank you.
Asher Hicks, same address in Peru.
My name is Asher Hicks, 73274 644 Avenue, 68421. To anyone who would dare suggest that refusing to wear a mask shows a lack of compassion, I would ask, is it compassionate to plant fears of perpetual illness into the minds of children? We reap what we sow, and the city council should be mindful of that. What we put into the universe is what we invite to come back to us. And when you seek to make choices for others, that is something that you should never take lightly. A mask mandate demands that people plant in their minds and send out to others a visible message that proclaims their sickness rather than their health. The mental health consequences of asking people, especially kids, to live in that kind of mindset should not be overlooked. I do not lack compassion when I choose not to wear a mask that the experts themselves have claimed do not work. My compassion is for the small business owners and their employees whose livelihoods have suffered. My compassion is especially for the many teens I know who are suffering from depression due to the isolation that stems from the new normal we are stuck in that doesn't even allow us to see the smiles on the faces of our friends. Demanding that we act as if we are biological threats to each other is not health-promoting. It is cruel. People need to see an end to the mask mandate. The masks fuel fear, and if this fear keeps going, people are going to get depressed. Thank you.
Mary Duarte, 14115 Cedar Circle, Omaha.
Sorry, hello? Can you hear me? Okay, I'm so nervous. I'm sorry. My name is Mary Duarte. I have three children, six, four, and one, two of which attend kindergarten and preschool. Sorry, I'm so nervous. They are at a critical age, recovering their mouths has done tremendous to their emotional, social, and language development. I visit my children's school and see a prison. Kids standing six feet apart, walking in lines like juveniles, masks on their face, unable to see one smile. I cannot see pictures of them because it just breaks my heart. They say asymptomatic people can spread COVID just as easily as systematic people can. Even though they say there's not a lot of research at this point, or at least research they can agree with. Take a look at the study that was done in Wuhan, China, which is ground zero for the coronavirus. They studied almost 10 million people between May 14th and June 1st, 2020. Test results revealed there were 300 asymptomatic cases. Then using contract tracing, they found there were 1,174 close contacts to those 300 cases. All 1,174 close contacts of the asymptomatic positive cases tested negative for COVID, every single one. This provides clear evidence that the chances of an asymptomatic transmission of the virus are slim to none. There was also a study from the University of Florida Gainesville Department of Biostatistics. They observed similarly low rates of transmission among asymptomatic people. The study showed systematic people transmitted the virus 28 times higher than asymptomatic person, even finding that the results actually closer to zero. And just like Jennifer Hicks mentioned, even Dr. Fauci, before the COVID pandemic started, said that the driver of outbreaks is always asymptomatic person. Even if there's one asymptomatic transmission in all of the history of respiratory viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks. In June, Dr. Maria Van Kirkhove of the World Health Organization shed doubt upon asymptomatic transmission. At a press conference, she stated, "From the data we have, it still seems to be rare that asymptomatic person actually transmits onward to a secondary individual." And then I would like to tell you my personal experience. I've had my daughter in daycare since day one of this pandemic. At the daycare, kids are constantly wiping their nose, grabbing toys, putting them in their mouth, and there has not been one positive case of COVID. Our kids attend martial arts twice a week. Kids are wrestling around, rolling around on the mat, breathing in each other's faces. Not one positive case in that community. School is so important on a child's social development, and things that are so important to kids are being taken away. Kids at that age need to be huddled in a circle for storytime, gossiping with their friends in the lunch line, or laughing and smiling at the teacher seeing an itsy-bitsy spider. I miss seeing my kid smile as he's running toward me at school. Masks do not belong on kids, especially when the chances of an asymptomatic kid passing along the virus is so low, if not at all. They will learn to wear masks, they say. They will get used to the masks, they say. Kids do not know better, they say. They can say what they want. But the fact is that these children will never get these years back, and I will never get these smiles back.
Marnie Hodgson or Hodg- Hodgen? Hodgson. Come on down, Marnie. 15055 Redmond Avenue.
Hi, my name is Marnie Hodgson. Dr. Marguerite Greisbrissen is a German neurologist specializing in neurotoxicology, environmental medicine, neuroregeneration, and neuroplasticity. These are her findings on wearing masks and our brains. Quote, "The re-breathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide." The human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. Acute symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, decreased concentration, and slow reaction time. However, with chronic oxygen deprivation, those symptoms disappear because you get used to it. But your efficiency will remain impaired, and the undersupply of oxygen in your brain continues to progress. Neurodegenerative diseases take decades to develop. If you forget your phone number today, the breakdown in your brain would have started 20 or 30 years ago. While you think you're used to wearing your mask, the degenerative processes in your brain are getting amplified as your oxygen deprivation continues. The second problem with chronic oxygen deprivation is that your brain's nerve cells are unable to divide themselves with less oxygen. The lost nerve cells will not be regenerated. What is gone is gone." End quote. Let that sink in for a moment. If this is happening in a developed adult brain, what are the ramifications for our children's neurological health? Dr. Greisbrissen went on to say, "A child's brain is incredibly active thirsting for oxygen." The more metabolically active the organ is, the more oxygen it requires. In children and adolescents, every organ is metabolically active. To deprive a child's brain of oxygen or to restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to their health, it is criminal. Oxygen deficiency inhibits the development of the brain, and the damage that has taken place cannot be reversed." End quote. This is intense information, especially if you're hearing it for the first time. But city council, this is not your first time hearing these findings. Oxygen deprivation has been brought up before, and did you err on the side of caution for your constituents and their children? You didn't. Instead, you extended the mandate for a third time. We've yet to see one randomized controlled trial proving masks are effective and safe, but there are plenty of studies and statements we've submitted to you that say otherwise. Three times you've shown you don't care about the findings of the experts, they have no political or financial gain. Instead, you listen to local leaders who have clear conflicts of interest and take sole advice from an institution that receives hundreds of thousands of dollars of government funding. Also, the mask mandate violates our religious freedoms protected by the Nebraska and the U.S. Constitution. You all can be held accountable for forcing businesses to violate their customers' civil rights. A business asking customers to remove their burkas or turbans before entering their store would be in violation. Asking Christians to veil their faces is an infringement of these same freedoms. I'll end with this, from 2 Corinthians, Chapter 3, Verse 18. "And we all with unveiled face beholding the glory of the Lord are being transformed into the same image from one degree of glory to another; for this comes from the Lord, who is the Spirit." Thank you.
Tina Lasek, 13005 Woodridge Circle, Bellevue.
Hello. It's been a long day. Thank you for your patience. I'm a senior citizen, and I'm just going to share from that perspective because I really, I agree with everything people have said here earlier. Been some fantastic testimony. I positively cannot wear a mask despite what some people say because my lungs were very badly damaged by pneumonia 50 years ago, and again, 25 years ago, and again, last March when I had COVID. I tried a mask once last April, the first time I went out after I recovered, and about two minutes, I came close to passing out. My heart raced for four minutes afterward, four hours, excuse me, and then I had a headache for two days. I'm a very stoic person, and this was not imaginary. At that time, I decided I was not going to hurt myself, no matter what the experts said. I'm not over 80, so that puts me in the second highest-risk category. I took responsibility for my own health and prepared ahead of time, and I made it through the flu just fine at home without the need for a doctor or any drugs. Why aren't the medical experts that you listen to saying anything at all about natural immunity for all those of us like me who've recovered from COVID? It just seems to be all about how percentage of vax that you can get in the population, but a lot of us have had COVID, and we've got our immunity. Prior to Omaha's mandate, when masks were a choice, people left me alone. But as soon as it passed, I know you've heard, the bullying began. I have to wear this tag, carried around with me, showing that I have a right to the health exemption that you put into the mandate. And I hate wearing it because it smacks of the yellow stars the Jews were forced to wear in Germany, but it does help to diffuse the tensions a little. Practically no one reads the ordinance, and they're clueless about what it says. This includes the young Omaha police officer guarding the door last week at a baker's. Imagine my surprise when I had to educate him about the health exemption. No one is aware of Item 7 on Page 3, and while I greatly appreciate you putting it in there, I can assure you, it's not working. Nothing's going to stop the fear and the bullying, except removing the mandate. In November, Costco and Natural Grocers changed their corporate policy, thanks to your ordinance. They told me that. I have been shopping there for eight months prior to that without a mask, but, and they were super strict in other states, but they let it slide in Nebraska because we didn't have any mandates. After your mandate, those two stores decided I couldn't walk in the door. I need a highly specialized organic diet. I have massive food intolerances. Everything I eat is fresh and made from scratch. There's no fast food or restaurants for me. Now I have to shop at six different stores in Sarpy and try to piece together some of what I need, and I'm struggling to find it. It's been mentioned tens of thousands are boycotting every city that has a mandate, and that would be me included. I won't shop here. I'd much prefer to shop here again. I need new glasses and hearing aids, and I can guarantee you, those won't be bought in Omaha if you keep this mandate. We've always had the flu, and we always will. Do you really want to keep this up forever? And have you heard where the new swab is supposed to go? Seriously? My husband-
Going to need you to wrap, but your time's expired.
Okay. Well, thank you. I can submit it via text. Email. Thank you.
You bet. Sylvia McDonald, 1454 South Street, Blair, Nebraska.
Hi, I'm Sylvia. I want to, most of everything that I have written down is pretty much most of the things that you've already heard, but I'm still going to go through some of it. I would ask that you please discontinue the mask mandate. One of the first things I want to talk about is an experience that I had yesterday with two of my kids. We, one of them's 10 and one's five, and they went to a doctor's appointment just for like a rand, for a yearly checkup yesterday. And when we went in, we didn't wear a mask. And when we went in there, they didn't check the temperatures when we went in, doesn't matter. But we got into the appointment, and they decided to check their blood oxygen level for part of their checkup. And the nurse said to me, "Wow, mom, it's at 100%." And I said, "Well, good. That's where it should be." And they told me that it's rare right now because of masks. So clearly, they're seeing people come in there, kids come in, and their oxygen level is not at 100%. That, to me, as just a mom, is proof that these are depriving of oxygen. And another thing that I wanted to talk about too is, people keep saying, "If you have a medical condition, you can have a medical exemption." If there is a risk to putting one of these on, which I have some information here for you guys to look at, which I think someone else already gave you the same one. If there's a risk to your health for putting one on, that's a medical exemption. You don't need to have, "I have asthma, I have this," personally. So I, thank you for your time, and please say no.
Jessica Gall. We're going to call, you'll be next after we go back to Brittany Bundy by video conferences. Brittany, ready? We don't want you talking while you're driving, Brittany. Okay.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So I, thank you for letting me speak. Sorry, I have a fussy baby. Hold on, there's your pinky. I wanted to speak on opposing the mask mandate, obviously. I was going to start with something about Dr. Fauci, but I think that if there's anything we can leave here with today that he is not a trustworthy source. So you all have heard everything I was going to say towards him, but I just want to urge you guys, our children need to be in school without restriction. I personally homeschool. I was considering sending one of my children, who's eight, to school this year, but because of the masks and all the craziness, I decided no. Not because we were scared of getting ill. We personally take our vitamins. And I will say, before we started taking our vitamins daily, we were sick, 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 sick. It was like, we were like trying to dodge these invisible bullets, and we would always end up sick. I started implementing vitamins daily for every single one of us. And I will say, all of 2020, we did not have any illness in our house at all. We walk around maskless everywhere. And you would think, "Oh, surely, that's the person who would get sick." Nothing. Three kids, a husband, no sickness. I know many families like that, but our children need to be in school without restriction. We've been in this pandemic for a year now. There's no reason that our children need to be wearing masks. And I don't need to get into the statistics on that. You hear it, but it seems like it falls on deaf ears. This is our third time being here about this craziness. And I'm pretty sure most of you can do a simple search to find that information. Think about this. Somebody who passes out and stops breathing, who is technically declared dead for more than 30 seconds, has lasting brain damage. If they come back to life, that could cause them to be as much as brain-dead. So then why are we putting children in masks for eight to nine hours a day, limiting their oxygen when they're in the most crucial points of their life development? Do you know what we've lost in our country is common sense and logic? Common sense and logic will show you and tell you that the experts, quote, "They have told us" what to do, from the CDC to Dr. Fauci, to these doctors at UNMC, have either grown money hungry or they've lost their common sense and logic. I don't want to hear another word from PhD Adipour, who is not elected. For nine months, we've come up here and told you all the information, but... Sorry, I already said something like that, so I'm going to move on. So, common sense and logic would take you down the path that maybe it's the masks that cause it. We are that far along that we can look back at where we came from and what has transpired to say, "Okay, this is obviously not helping." We're continuing to see cases spike. We're continuing to see cases stay steady. These mask mandates aren't working. So you guys either can figure it out, how to keep your oath and serve the people, or people like us will replace you. We are willing to get the job done and to keep our oath and actually put our tax dollars to work the way that they should be working.
Your time's expired, but you may submit the remainder of your remarks, if you have any, by email to the clerk.
All right.
What I'm going to do at this time, as I said, Jessica Gall, 3601 North 19th Street, will be next, speaking. But there's 10 people left whose names, I'm going to read the first names. If you wish to speak, remember you have to sign in and have a verified address. If you don't hear your name and wish to speak, you'll have this opportunity and time to register properly. Jessica Gall, then Lucrece, Courtney, Brandon, Lorraine, Doug, Jeff, Jeffrey Lyons, another Courtney, Girmes, James Gronjes or Gronus, and Tanya Cloyde. So if you don't, if you didn't hear your name and you want to speak, last chance for registering. registering. Jessica, you ready? Jessica Gall, 3601 North 19th.
Thank you. I am here today to express my concerns to the Omaha City Council. This is my first time speaking, and truly, I'd rather be at home doing what I love, which is researching the government and history, but instead, I'm here having to educate our elected officials on the government they run. Everyone's talking about science, and that's great. We need science to make wise decisions, but let's talk about what else you need. As city council members, did you take an oath to science? No. You took an oath to uphold the constitution of your state and our great nation. Let's look at how the constitution applies to this and how, as the constitution should be our utmost concern and deciding factor. Enacting a mask mandate in concern for public health is a violation of both the 14th and 19th Amendment of the Constitution you swore to protect and defend. Many council members across Nebraska have claimed that constitutional rights are not final and that liberties are infringeable. Before you say that, let me quote the Constitution that, again, you swore to uphold. "They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." The definition of liberty is another thing that I would like to touch on. It reads, "The state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views." Another example would be, "The power or scope to act as one pleases." An example, a mask mandate. I looked up some synonyms for oppressive restrictions that we could understand them better. They are inhumane, unjust, dictatorial, and tyranny. If you believe that a liberty is a right to be taken away and that you can impose oppressive restrictions on the community, I am here to tell you that you should not be representing the people. As the person before me stated, we are completely willing to take your seats and uphold the oaths we swore into. I don't use these words lightly, so hear me when I say this. This is a treasonous act against your country, community, and constitution. By doing so, you have given us every reason to convict and remove you from office, and at this time, I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to the people. This is your call to stand up and remove these members from office. Please, in the interest of your constituents, do not vote for this anti-American mandate. I urge you to vote on liberty. That is the patriotic thing to do. Thank you.
Lucrece Bundy, 6405 South 179th Avenue, or Street, excuse me.
Hello, I'm Lucrece. I am an attorney, I'm a mom of three little boys, and I'm a, I'm a small business owner. So I love the law, obviously that's why I practice, but I am here today to oppose the mask mandate because I believe that it's absolutely unlawful, and I refuse to abide by it. So I want to tell you guys a little bit about how this has impacted my, has impacted my family as well. My three boys, my two older boys are in elementary school, and my little one will be starting kindergarten next year, and I do not want my kid to have to wear a mask. My kids come home every day and complain to me that they cannot breathe. That's what my boys tell me every day when they come home. "Mommy, I can't breathe. Mommy, I can't breathe. Mommy, I can't breathe." And that's what I have to hear from my boys every day coming home from school. They go to recess, and they're told, "If you're gonna take down your mask, you have to be six feet away from your friends, okay? So let's just socially distance you from your friends at recess. So you can go play football over here, but you dare not touch your friends and actually play with them." That's what my kids are living with every single day in school because of this mask mandate. So again, I'm a lawyer, I love the law, and I know that you guys are doing an amazing job, and you're doing the best that you can, but this mask mandate has got to end because it's hurting my children and it's hurting my family. Now, one of the things that I wanted to touch on that Per doesn't talk about, I think that's her last name, I'm sorry, and all the other medical people who are for the mask mandate, is if you just look at the Douglas County, Nebraska COVID-19 dashboard, shows that 61,151 were tested in Douglas County, and 48,032 have recovered. Why haven't they said anything about that? That's a huge number of folks. More than 50% of the people who have tested positive for COVID-19 in Douglas County have recovered. Only 601 have died. Only 601, oh, that number. And out of the 601 who have died, 34.6% were 85 and older. And out of that 601, 88.5% had an underlying condition. That means that most of the people dying from COVID in our county have an underlying condition and are over 75 years old. So I'm asking you guys, based on the statistics that are on the Douglas, Nebraska dashboard for us to see, why are we seeking to extend this mandate on our babies, on our children, on our youth, on our young adults, on our healthy adults? When the dashboard is telling us what the facts right now, even though the, you know, the medical people over here are telling us that we need to keep this on until we're vaccinated, I am urging you guys to not extend the mask mandate, and I show the sentiment of everyone else here who has also talked about moving out of Omaha. I've been here for more than 20 years. I love this city, that's why I practice here. I would love to continue serving the people of Omaha, but if this mask mandate keeps getting extended, I'm gonna have to move my family, and I'm ready to do that if that's what we need to do. But I'm imploring you guys to please hear the people here. We're asking you to let our children be free in school, to live and to breathe, to let us make the decision to wear the mask if we want to and not want to. So please do not extend this mask mandate. Thank you.
Courtney Williams, 2331 Raymond Ave, Council Bluffs.
Thank you, Courtney Williams, 2331 Raymond Ave. I read President Biden's inaugural speech, and I noted his call for unity. Then I heard it echoed by others. I wondered, "What does that mean? What are they asking me, us, to do? What does this unity, the most elusive of things, as Biden put it, look like? Perhaps what these leaders actually want is not unity, but conformity. Maybe their actually want is for those who disagree with them to conform in speech and behavior and go quietly along with the majority. Maybe a call for unity is just a bid to silence opposition through shaming. We must all put away disagreement, get along now." That seems a rather unrealistic expectation, seeing as the majority is hardly noteworthy with roughly half the country aiming in one direction and half in the other. Or maybe they do truly desire unity. In order to have unity, we must be united in something. If this isn't just a vision of conformity, but a true pursuit of unity, in what can we possibly be united? We can't expect that half of Americans on either side will just change their minds and agree. It's obviously unrealistic to hope for unity in thought, beliefs, goals, action, legislation, personal choices, or medical decisions. So is unity then an impossible dream? No. There is one thing in which we, every one of us, can be united. That's respecting and loving each other person in the midst of our disagreement. We can agree to share discussion of differing points of view and differing conclusions without resorting to insults, threats, demeaning language, or dismissiveness. We can respect the right and capability of each individual to make their own choices for themselves and those in their care. We can choose different actions without attempting to force our own response on others. We can keep in mind that the choices of others based on their own beliefs and action, values, are equally as valid as our own. We can remember, we don't need to know someone else's reasons for, or personal business in order to judge whether their choices are acceptable because it isn't our business to do so. If we want to have unity, this is the attitude we and you all will have to take. If you and leadership are serious about building this unity and not just painting a feel-good picture with the words, then private and governmental authorities are gonna have to reverse course in order to set this foundation. Employers, city councils, school and county boards, governors across the nation are gonna have to get out of the business of division. There are many differing yet valid personal and professional responses to the current situation with COVID-19. Every time you pass an ordinance or a mandate in an attempt to coerce people's behavior to conform to the present, the response which you feel is appropriate, you are creating division. You're giving legitimacy to judgment, harassment, and discrimination of others. You're circumventing the only thing in which we can be united, treating each other with dignity and respect. Please end the city of Omaha's rule in stoking division by eliminating the mask mandate. Please aim truly for unity.
Your time's expired.
As Biden said, without unity-
You may submit the rest of your remarks by email.
-there's no peace, only bitterness and fury.
Brandon McAvoy, 10022 Wirt Plaza.
Brandon McAvoy. My name is Brandon McAvoy. I'm here today on behalf of the citizens of Nebraska. I am here on behalf of the thought leaders in metabolic therapeutics, the Cleveland Clinic for Functional Medicine, the Nutrition Coalition, the Institute for Human and Machine Cognition, the Irish Heart Disease Foundation, and the Citizen Science Foundation because of the blatant disregard for the science involving first-world metabolism disease, metabolic syndrome, and insulin resistance, which is far more pervasive and is what's truly driving the COVID crisis. This mask mandate charade is blatantly an abuse of the citizens by widely refuted science. Time and again, the Dietary Guidelines Committee has ignored the robust data on low-carb, high-fat diet science for disease prevention. The advent of the Dietary Guidelines is a perfect correlation to the current obesity crisis. Look to Nutrition Coalition for dietary guidelines based on robust science, not crony dogma. It took nine months for the CDC to even acknowledge vitamin D deficiency related to COVID. Everyone acknowledges diabetes is a risk factor for COVID, yet no one elucidates Verda Health's role in clinically reversing type 2 diabetes with a ketogenic diet. Even the American Diabetes Association concedes it is a valid means. The ADA CEO herself utilizes a low-carb diet to manage her diet, her diabetes, contrary to decades of inadequate, low-grade science that directly led us to the public health crisis. Mandating masks instead of addressing root cause of disease is a disgrace. No one elucidates the fact that your adipose tissue has immunological and endocrinological functions. If one is insulin resistant due to grains, sugars, and vegetable oils, it makes you leptin resistant. Leptin is a pleiotropic adipocytokine that has a multipurpose, that is a multipurposed fat-based signaling molecule that has explicit roles in the cytokine storm. In animal models, when you knock out the insulin receptor, T-cell immunity is far more sluggish. The Irish Heart Disease Foundation and Citizen Science Foundation elucidate the real science on heart disease pointing to grains, sugar, and vegetable oils as the catalyst to heart disease, the number-one killer worldwide, while diarrhea kills more than COVID. The sentiment is echoed throughout the functional medicine community. Furthermore, demonization of valid therapeutics touted by vetted healthcare professionals such as the White Coat Summit, Dr. Simone Gold, such as hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin, are the smoking gun that this is a political trade. Hydroxychloroquine has been approved for eat, over, I'm gonna skip that because, um, this has been a pseudoscience, fear-mongering from the jump. Just cower in fear and wait for the government to save you, you say? No, thanks. I'm in nutritional ketosis, which down-regulates NLRP3, an inflammatory cytokine which bats actually use to combat COVID themselves. This is an appeal to authority fallacy. So long as the public health officials hold this abusive charade, Metro Metabolics will be providing free metabolic therapeutics consultations to the citizens, informing them how their governing bodies and legislators are covering for Big Pharma and Big Foods' agenda, and is directly abusing the population. Again and again, the finger will be pointed at you. The most robust randomized controlled trial out of Denmark, and the Sweden epidemiologists say masks do little to nothing, and the German study says T O2's detriment to one's health. As long as local legislators insist on abusing the public with these unconstitutional pseudoscience mandates, Metro Metabolics will be providing root cause, functional medicine, metabolic therapeutics, and epigenetics information to the heartland for free. No one has any idea as to the lasting psychological detriments of this Orwellian abuse of the citizens' civic powers. We are not your lab animals. We do not recognize your authority in this realm, as no educated person would perpetuate the sick, ignorant negligence of the mask mandate.
Your time's expired. You may submit the remainder of your remarks by email. Lorraine Ranante, 1108 Park Drive, Papillion.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to look at this mask mandate a little differently than most, although I strongly agree that a mask mandate is government overreach. I can't help but think how all of these restrictions and mandates translate into money. Money truly makes the world go around. The more money you have, the more power you have. There simply is no integrity left, and certainly no altruism or very little in the world. Those that are insecure about their own abilities tend to be obnoxious, demeaning, and demanding. Let's look to Dr. Fauci, the soup de jour today. Personally, I don't think he is credible, but aside from that, it was reported on January 28th of 2021 that he was the highest-paid federal employee for the year of 2019. I find that very interesting. It was also reported that Dr. Fauci was involved with making vaccines regarding a lab-created superbug virus. He was told to pause the project on October 17th, 2014, from the White House Office of Science and Technology, Policy, and Department of Health and Human Services under the Obama administration, but he did not. As much as Dr. Fauci enjoys his new celebrity fame and fortune, this really isn't or shouldn't be about him. There are a growing number of people that believe masks do more harm than good, and then there are those that think the government must in some way control, indoctrinate, shame, and reduce people to be nothing more than unable to care for themselves. The arrogance of government to think, "We, the people, cannot make sound decisions with our own doctor," is astounding. Remove this mask mandate and let the people decide what works for them. Government needs to lead, so businesses will stop making employees wear masks. So I have just one question. What's in it for you to keep this mask mandate? Thank you.
Doug Schumacher, 1017 North 63rd Street. Jeffrey Lyons, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Doug Schumacher, 1017 North 63rd Street. I had a ton of stuff planned, but everyone has covered everything so clearly. It's fantastic, so I've just been standing back here watching, and what I'm seeing is one of the sickest things I've ever seen. I'm so disappointed. I can't believe that this is America. We've got eight people up here who sit there and have the control over our lives. This is disgusting. Our kids are suffering, our families are suffering. You can control what we wear, you can control where we go, and it's wrong. This is the first step. We're gonna be getting COVID vaccination cards, or I'm be, you can come in the country if you get tested. If you don't, you can sit in a hotel for two weeks at your expense. That's going on in Canada right now. And we have eight people that can choose what we're gonna put on our faces. If I go out in public and I have my "Please remove the city council" t-shirt on, is there gonna be a point where that's, that's aggressive speech? We can't have that. Let's remove that. This isn't at all what I had planned on saying, but as I stand up there and watch, I kept becoming more and more disgusted with each and every one of you. Oh, I'm sorry, it's nine of you, not eight. This is sad. This mandate never should have passed in the first place. What an overreach. You've seen the numbers. You know they're wrong. We listened to Adipour and Dr. Khan. They work at UNMC. Has UNMC received plenty of money from this? Do they have the most to gain out of anybody? Damn right, they sure do. We were silenced when we laughed at Dr. Khan earlier. We laughed because he said, "Let's not make it political," as he puts up a picture of Joe Biden. What an utter hypocrisy.
You were asked to come to order because the rules of debate-
It was funny. It was actually funny. It was laugh-out-loud funny because it was so hypocritical.
You were out of order, that's why.
Sometimes people laugh, just like we try to breathe, but we can't do that, we have to wear a mask. We have to do what we're told. I've been getting text messages from people asking how the meeting's going. I've been telling them, "Fantastic. These people have been so good. They've been clear, they've been concise, they've been heartfelt. They're not pleading for you to remove the mask. They're pleading for their freedom back." I hope you understand that. I hope you're hearing their disgust in you people specifically. And I hope you understand how much you've overreached and gotten into our world. We're trying to just live our lives. We're trying to do our best, raise our families, pay our taxes. The things you guys, I think, should be worrying about maybe direct more with the city and not with our personal lives. I can't believe that we've come to this. Anybody that votes for this should be ashamed of themselves. It's not about public health anymore. It never was. He's right, it's political. It's absolutely political. They're getting money from it. Anytime you monetize a disease, when there's a money benefit that's not just from doing a service, when it's, "Oh, it's better if it's COVID because they get more money," there's a problem. And then we're listening to those people? That's a problem. When this doctor in particular, and I hope it's the right one, if I recall-
You're gonna need to wrap up, your time's expired.
Again, I hope you hear what these people are saying. This isn't a plea for masks, it's a plea for our freedom.
Jeffrey Lyons, 15515 Jackson Circle. Courtney Girmes, you're next.
Good afternoon. I'm here to oppose the mask mandate. I'm not testifying on my own behalf, but on behalf of my child. I hope testimony, I hope my testimony and that of the overwhelming majority here against this mandate does not fall on deaf ears. I have only four points against the mandate. The role of government, political motivations, the effectiveness of masks, and the effects of ending the mandate. Firstly, it's not the role of government to determine the acceptable risk to health assumed by individuals. Personal protective measures are just that, personal. While no one has the legal right to intentionally infect another person, there are already laws in place against that. Conversely, no one has a legal right against incidental illness, so it's not the role of government to adopt measures with that claimed purpose. My second point, motivation for political action. Politicians are motivated to enact ineffective measures to say that they did something, anything in the face of a problem. The people of Omaha know that you are not the cause of any virus, so preventing the spread of a virus is not something that politicians are expected to do. spread of a virus is not something that politicians are expected to do. Mandating masks is a blunt response to a pointed problem that politicians are not capable of solving. My third point, cloth masks are ineffective at preventing the spread of viruses. Even N95 masks do not filter small enough to prevent the spread of COVID-19. N95 masks must be disposed of after 15 minutes of use for reaching what's called maximum penetration. Surgical masks prevent droplet transference from one person to another in a particular setting, sterile, climate-controlled environments such as an operating table. Surgical masks in that setting do not filter the exhaled breath of medical staff, they merely redirect it to the side. NIH studies show that surgical masks are 13 times more effective than the cloth masks that are mandated and that neither provide a perceptible difference in preventing viral spread compared to no face covering at all. In addition to not preventing the spread of viruses, wearing cloth masks merely increase the risk of bacterial and other infections, especially in children. My fourth and final point, the effects of ending the mandate. The lack of a mandate is not the same as a ban. Without a mandate, those who wish to wear a mask can still wear one, but those who wish not to wear one must fall into some sort of exempt category. I'm sorry, that's with a mandate. Without a mandate, those who wish to wear a mask may still do so, and those who wish not to wear one may do so without fear of social or legal consequences. Please let us make our own medical decisions and the medical decisions for our children.
Courtney, is it Girmes? Girmes, 1375 County Road E, Ithaca, Nebraska.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Girmes. I'm here to talk about our civil liberties today. It is our job as American citizens to stand up for what is right, whether that makes you the most popular person in the room or not. Benjamin Franklin said, "Those who would give up a little essential liberty to purchase temporary safety deserve neither liberty or safety." I implore this city council to err on the side of liberty tonight. Are we free in Omaha? I don't feel free. I am so surprised at how many people are compliant and fearful, how many are buying into the false narrative of COVID-19. The fact that there are almost no flu cases is beyond absurd. Where's our amnesty to walk out freely without covering our faces or the faces of our children? Has God already determined everything that will happen? Jesus says we are 100% predestined and we have 100% free will. I looked at a lot of your bios on the website, and I found that many of you are believers. It is time to start fearing God and no one or anything else. Your hands are not tied by the Health Department or anyone else. Your choice to keep this mask mandate going is 100% this Omaha City Council tonight. Let Governor Ricketts lead our great state of Nebraska in this pandemic, and don't put that burden on you, on this council. The percentage of staffed hospital beds in Nebraska filled by coronavirus patients is below 10%, which is, which is a rolling average for seven days. The state moved into its green phase. Our activities went from 75% to 100% recently. The governor has done a great job at preserving our liberties. Now it is time that Omaha City Council does the same. We are Nebraskans, and we shouldn't compare ourselves to the overpopulated areas of this country. I do not believe there's any evidence that make masks to slow the spread, but without a strong pushback on these mandates, they're, they are likely to not go away. The masks are about control, and it is time for the people of Omaha to have their control back. And if people think tonight that if the mask mandate, they vote it down and there's no more mandate, your schools can still have mandates in Omaha. It is up, there's three ways in Nebraska to mandate masks in schools and per the Nebraska Department of Education in Lincoln. And one is governor, two is your school board, which supersedes your superintendent, and three are health boards, but they can be iffy and can be challenged. The reason why your children can play basketball unmasked or you're wrestlers is because the NSA, which is Nebraska Schools of Activity Association, has a statewide blanketed rule that states that kids in any school can, can take off their mask if they're playing. There's many schools in Nebraska that are non-masked schools. During these times, let Omaha be a beacon of light like other great cities in this state. We deserve the choice to mask, and once again, I implore all of you city council members to vote no for passing this mask mandate. Circumstances have changed since you have voted this in, the people of Omaha have spoken. Mark 329 says, "If a kingdom is divided against itself, that kingdom cannot stand." Thank you for your time and service, and please let Governor Ricketts lead the great state in this pandemic and take this burden off this council. Thank you.
James Gronjes, 611 South 17th Street.
Doug said something earlier about how there are eight of you guys up here making decisions on this, and I just wanted to say that the reason you guys are up here is because you make your opinions and your voice well-known and heard, and all of us have that ability too. You know, it's our voice that carries the influence. So if we want something to change, it's important that we have our voice being heard. I think it's great that there's so many of us up here talking about these issues today, and I think that it should happen more often. Yeah, everyone should have their voice heard. Yeah. What I wanted to say about the mask mandate is that I think it's largely a question of science. I've heard so many different, you know, statistics, obviously. I've also heard that like the virus can transmit through the eyes and through the mouth and the ears even, and I, I haven't heard anything that's like cohesive on that effect. It's just, what I'm thinking is that if we had a real concrete study that said, yes, masks actually do help in, you know, stopping the transmission of the virus, if there was real like confirmable, irrefutable proof that said that masks actually helped, I think that that would give people a lot more faith in making the right decision to wear the mask themselves. They could wear it in, you know, the situations where it's appropriate, especially like hospitals, things like that. So having that scientific knowledge, I think, really solves the problem. That'll let people know, you know, where and when the masks are important to wear. I also think that if it's mandated and people don't have this information, like I, I still don't know for sure if masks actually help. If it's mandated, then, you know, people are going to disagree on that, and there's going to be unrest over that. So bring the science first is my point, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Cloud, 2811 Inglewood Drive, Papillion.
I don't have anything typed up today. I just really want to talk to you guys personally on a few things. One, I live in Papillion. We had a mask mandate in Papillion, and it fell apart because our numbers went way down. Obviously, today we're in the green. And anyway, Papillion did try to reinstate it, and it failed. It did not pass. Guess what? Nobody stopped wearing their mask. Everywhere I go in Papillion, everyone still wears a mask everywhere, everywhere. No one stopped just because the mandate ended. So I just want you guys to understand that. Schools can still do this without you. Businesses can still do this without you. They have their own exemptions. Let them handle it. I don't understand why this needs to be your call. The second thing is, I didn't really want to go here, but because honestly, on a side of caution, I almost know better than to say this, but listening to some of these moms here today almost has me in tears about what their kids are saying when they come home from school and what their, what their school day is like. Our, our, our kids go to a school that does not require masks. We all signed a thing at the beginning of the year that says no masks, no social distancing. We're all going to take the risk. We've been open since August. We meet two days a week. We have no masks on students or teachers. We have no social distancing. I help with kindergarten. Our kindergartners are playing all day together. They play tag, they're sharing toys, they're on top of each other. If they have a runny nose, I blow their nose, and I throw it in the trash. I don't put on gloves or anything, and, and life goes on, and it's beautiful. You guys, it's beautiful. We have had no outbreaks. We have had no outbreaks, no cases. This has been going on since August, and so I do want these parents to know that if they want to fight this, they should, because it doesn't have to be that way. It does not have to be that way. It is incredible what we have going on at our school. We've been open since August, nothing, no cases, no outbreaks. We even have elderly teachers who are, elderly teachers who are against mandating masks on healthy people, and one of them is like best friends with my daughter. My daughter's in first grade, and their, their bond is so amazing, and I'm just so thankful. The next thing I want to bring up is, it's frustrating when people look at us, whether it's media or what have you, and say, well, you're not a doctor, you're not a scientist. Do you know, I have doctors and scientists that I know personally, some that work at UNMC and will speak to me for like 45 minutes about, about so much, and they, they won't come here and speak today, because if they do, they lose their license, or they lose their funding, or they lose their credibility or what have you. But there are whistleblowers speaking out, and like, who am I to bring that to you? But it's, it's happening, and I've asked them, I even know people who work in nursing homes, and they're on conference calls, getting the vaccine right now, and the people on the conference call are telling them, hey, when the vaccine boxes come, make sure you throw away the box that they are in, because on the box it says, oh, I ran out of time.
Your time's expired, but you may submit the remainder of your remarks by email. Brianna Kruhman, 7871 Bauman Ave. Final speaker. Brianna Kruhman, K-R-U-H-M-I-N.
Hello, I'm Brianna Kruhman, 7871 Bauman Ave. I didn't want to speak today, but I wanted to show face, and I want to know that voices do matter, like they said, and I, everybody, you've heard all the stuff, so I just wanted to say what God has laid on my heart. First, I want to say that going to church, my husband wears a mask because he is a leader, and he feels like he wants to respect the leaders, he wants to respect what's going on, and he wants people to feel comfortable to come. I do not wear a mask because I have conviction that, I've always believed that a smile can save a life, and I, I still believe that, and please do not take that away. Please do not end that. I want people to know that they're comfortable, that they can come as they are. And my best friend has wrote this, so I want to, it's basically how I feel, so I want to just read that, and it says, "I get that thinking the wearing a mask is thoughtful for the people that are scared. I really dislike mask mandates and the wear a mask to love your neighbor mentality because I believe their fear is based on a lie. That lie is being used to harm people. That lie prohibits families from getting together, puts the elderly and sick in isolation. That lie closes churches, destroys businesses and people's livelihood, stops handshakes and hugs. That lie prohibits people from taking a walk by the beach or traveling. That lie has been used to literally beat people in the streets. But yes, let's love our neighbor by telling everyone everywhere to avoid human contact and accept the belief that gathering together in close contact is ultimately dangerous, dangerous and not worth it." God made our bodies strong. We are strong. We will get through this. Life will go on. We've made it this far. We can keep going. All we ask is that you let us decide. Let it be up to the people. And then I, people have been made to believe that healthy people just breathing are dangerous. So my question is, with that belief, when can we go back to normal? Thank you.
The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I make a few comments, and I'm, I'm going to be very brief and make, not make a lot of comments today, but I do want to give Dr. Poor and Dr. Khan an opportunity to respond if they would like to. And let me say at the, let me say at the outset, Dr. Poor, being on the health board and watching how long and the kinds of hours and the kinds of, and amount of time and effort and sleepless nights you and your staff have had to endure because you're simply trying to do what you think is the right thing. I know you're being attacked, and I know people are saying things that you and I both know don't really reflect who you are, but the fact of the matter is, is that you and your staff have worked tirelessly to make a difference in this community, and you're doing what you believe is the right thing to do. Dr. Khan, I've just about finished your book, The Next Pandemic, so I just want to take the opportunity before I make a few comments for you all, if you would like the opportunity to say just a couple of things for about a minute or so, just in rebuttal, you can certainly do that at this time. And if you don't, that's fine. Okay, thank you. I'm just going to be very brief, and, because next week I am going to support the mask mandate. I am going to do that. Among the things that, when we talked about there's money to be made, there is. There are some people that are making a lot of money. Many of them are nurses who don't want to be there. Many of them are store clerks that don't want to be there. Many of them are other individuals in this community with menial jobs who have to be there no matter what, and, and they are bearing the brunt of some of the concern here. I don't believe, and when we talk about mask mandates, we don't talk about the, the three steps that you all recommend that we take, and that's the mask mandate, social distancing, and stand away from large crowds. If you don't do those three things, then the likelihood is much greater. And while many of you have not seen any individuals with COVID-19, or you don't know any, I've been to several funerals. Several funerals. More than a few. Several of them are friends of mine, and I have watched them suffer, and I have watched people in my community suffer and be concerned. I will not abandon those people. I will not. And next week, I will be supporting the mask mandate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I think it's important for any and all of us to know that it's, it's really our job to ask questions and, and get as much information as we can to make informed decisions. So, so that's, I, I did have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask Dr. Poor, if she could come up, please. I know we, we've heard a lot about the, the PCR tests, and I was just wondering if, if you could explain to, to us in Douglas County and/or the city of Omaha, how, what, what is the, the level on the PCR test that we use as the constant for determining whether or not someone's testing positive for, for COVID?
And Dr. Poor, before you begin, we need your health department address.
Okay. Adi Poor, Douglas County Health Department, 111 41st Street. So that's a good question. So we are using, as everybody around the country, there are different laboratories who are doing the testing. We have LabCorp, we have Quest Laboratory, National Laboratory, then we have at Nebraska Public, at Nebraska Medicine, Nebraska Public Health Lab, who has their own laboratory who does PCR testing. We have Test Nebraska, which was what the governor ordered, and they are doing PCR testing too. Each of these laboratories have their own procedures, but what is all in uniform is they all need to be clear approved, and they get audited by the federal government. Only then can they be approved, FDA-approved testing. So that is what is going on in every laboratory.
Okay. So, but I, what I, I don't think I heard was that across the board is, is there, and tell me, there, there might be, that's why I'm, I'm trying to ask the questions, is, is there a constant, a, a constant benchmark, if you will, of the level of PCR tests that all those different entities use to determine whether or not someone tests positive for COVID?
I'm not a laboratory person, but the way I understand it when I ask the question, there is a range. So there are some who are higher on the range and some who are lower, but there is not a standard that everybody would say, well, it needs to be 30 or it needs to be 40. That's what I understand, that the laboratories have some leeway in between, in between a range, an acceptable range.
I, I think it would be, personally, I, I would think it would be important to, to have a standard so that we know what we're, what we're testing.
Like I say, this is, I'm not a laboratory person. This is not, not my area. My area is only to make sure that whatever cases are reported are really from an approved, FDA-approved laboratory, and that is affirming to me that there is some quality control. And then, you know, you have antigen, antigen testing, you have PCR testing, you have antigen testing. So there are so many different laboratory tests, but what I only can tell you is that those are all FDA-approved laboratory and FDA-approved tests.
And, and I'm not- And, and I'm not questioning the, the approval certification. I'm just asking about knowing, I mean, and, and you are reporting the information that you're getting, I understand that. But what, what I'm trying to get at is, I want to, I want to know the information coming in, how, you know, what, 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 um, what levels that they're testing to, or what they're testing, what's, what's considered a positive test and what's considered a negative test? I understand that when you're getting that from the FDA-approved association or, or that, that laboratory, that you are, you're, you're reporting those numbers. But, but I'm asking is, what's the, what's the information coming in standard?
You would need to ask a laboratory, a laboratorian to do that. The director, for example, from Nebraska Public Health Lab may be able to answer the question. I don't know if Dr. Khan, uh, will be able to answer. We are making sure that the cases that are coming in are reported to the state of Nebraska, DTHS, and then are reported to us, and that they are coming from an FDA-approved laboratory. That's the only thing, uh, where, where I have control over.
Okay, I, I understand that, but again, I, I'd like, I would like to know the information coming in, even though they're, I know they're FDA-approved and accredited, but what standards they're using to determine whether or not it's a positive test? So I, I know you're, excuse me, I know you're not a laboratorian, as you said, but if, if you maybe could, could give me a contact that, that I could, could, that would be helpful on that. I had a couple more questions. So, um, I, I noted in the, in, in the report that you sent to us, um, that, sorry, I have it here. One is, you know, you, you break it down and what we, and I'm sorry, no one else can see what we have here, but what, what you send to us, um, you break down, for example, apples to apples, cases per hundred thousand population of Omaha zip codes. But then you also give us the information of cases per hundred thousand for the entirety of Douglas County. And I, I just, I find it interesting that, um, you know, for example, like last week, cases per thousand, per hundred thousand in Omaha was thirty-one point three. And the cases per hundred thousand in Douglas County as a whole is thirty point seven. So the county as a whole, which includes Omaha, is lower than the city of Omaha, which has the mandate. So I, I just find that kind of an interesting, interesting statistic. I, I wondered if you had any, any response to that.
You know, and I look at that, and I look at all the zip codes. I mean, you see a lot of variability there, the zip codes in the city of Omaha that have higher cases versus some in the county area. So yeah, I, I see the same thing.
But it, it seems to me that, if you include the entirety of the county, and it's lower than the city of Omaha, then, then I think you can extrapolate that, that, those areas outside the city of Omaha zip codes are that much lower that is driving the number down below what the city of Omaha is.
Correct. And that would, that wouldn't be a surprise if you think about urban and closed areas. There is much a greater chance for viruses to transmit.
I, I also note, um, I, I think this is from, from your, your department as well, that in a typical January, and I, I know this, this last January, we had very little cases of influenza, but in a typical January, um, we have about thirteen hundred cases per week of confirmed influenza. And for example, last week, again, we had, which I know we're on the decline, we had one thousand forty-eight cases, and I'm sorry, that's, that's prob, I'll, let me go, that's, I didn't do apples to apples there because that's, we had one thousand cases, one thousand forty-eight cases of influenza in Omaha in a typical January for Douglas County. It's thirteen hundred. So I'll include, I'll, let's say the, the rest of the county is a couple hundred more. So we're basically at the same level of influenza cases and COVID cases in this year. And, and I'm just trying to, why, I guess, why didn't we have masks for influenza in the past is part of the question?
You know, I mean, first of all, we have a vaccine against influenza, and we always had a vaccine. And even though the vaccines were not perfect, but there are a lot of people who are taking that, the flu vaccine. And so once you have a vaccine and you are able to protect the, the sensitive, uh, population, I think you are more declined not to have a mask mandate. So I do think that's why we never had the flu. Now, I just, actually, before I came here, I wanted to look, uh, ask my staff for the influenza numbers too this year. And so far, we had twelve cases of influenza from October through December. And last year, at the same time, we had four thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven. So it definitely, you know, has decreased our, our influenza outbreaks too.
Right, I, I, I acknowledge that as well too. But, but you also said we have a, we have a vaccine for influenza, yet in a typical year, last year, we had, you know, about thirteen hundred cases per week.
Correct. And we have mild cases. If you think about that, a lot of flu cases, people, people stay home, take care of themselves, and go back. I think with, uh, with COVID-19, we were unknowing in the beginning what really the health outcome was. Then we saw all the hospitalization that occurred, all the excessive death. So I do think, uh, that had something to do with it.
Okay. And then someone, someone did bring up the, the, uh, that Great Britain is now mandating the N-95. Do you take that as an acknowledgement that the cloth mask or the, like, these types of masks are not effective, or not as, as effective?
Yeah. I would say, over time, we have learned a lot. And in the beginning, you remember, I think we talked about that bandanas are not the right thing, and that masks really need to be worn right over the nose and not under the nose. And I would say a two-ply mask is a good, a good mask to wear. That's where I'm coming from. But it needs to fit appropriately and needs to be worn appropriately and taken off and then washed at the end of the day if you don't wear those N-95s.
How many, how many do you think are doing that?
I, I'm doing it.
So, so maybe Great Brit, Great Britains might be a little bit of a overreach then in your estimation?
You know, if, if people want to wear an N-95, but I think the major message is, wear a two-ply mask over your nose in a correct way. That would be my message, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I know, you know, we, we've had a number of people, both, you know, both proponents and, and opponents who throw all their science on the table and, and some dispute and some, you know, contradict, and is, are there any studies that you have come across that make an argument for masks not being effective?
I think Dr. Khan was saying it right. There is not a study that shows that masks are harmful.
That's not what I asked, though.
Exactly. So I'm going to the next step. So what you are asking, how, do we have studies that actually prove the, the science of masks? We have a lot of anecdotal studies, and I have shared some of them with you, the hairstylist, the two hairstylists. So we, we have a lot of, of studies, but do we have them controlled where we are saying, that's probably missing at this time? But I would, I would just want to close in saying, if our national leaders who have access to all the best scientists in the world are making recommendation to wear a mask, who are we to, uh, to question that? That's what I say. The best scientists available are providing the information to the leaders of our nation. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be good enough? That's good enough for me.
Okay. Well, and that's what, I mean, as I started out by saying, I mean, it's, I think it's our job to ask the questions so that we can get the most information to make informed decisions. I think that's what people expect from us. Okay, thank, thank you, Dr. Poor.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Actually, I'll, I'll just, one other thing I'll add on because I, I know, um, I talked with, no, no, I'm sorry, doctor, you, you can sit down. I just had a kind of a comment. Earlier on, um, I, I remember reading an article, I think it was from Oral He, Health Magazine, quoted Dr. Rupp, um, from years ago, talking about mask efficacy and, and the need to actually study it. And I, one of the things that I hope comes out of this is, so that we kind of know going forward, and, and Dr. Rupp raised this question, I think it was as far back, it may have been as far back as two thousand and eight, to state that, you know, we, and I'm paraphrasing, but we, we wear masks because that's kind of what we have done. But what we really need to do is test the efficacy of masks at the same level or the same degree that we test medications. And we don't have that information right now, but I, I would, I would hope that maybe, uh, when we're all said and done with this experiment, that we actually do that so that we know going forward what, what, what the best steps would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Well, thank you, Dr. Poor. Sorry, that, I was going to try and catch you, not make you go back and forth. And, and Dr. Poor, again, thank you for all your efforts, and I appreciate your quick responses to some constituents' questions, especially over the last week. I, I think the biggest question that I have, and, and by the way, I can't answer it. Like, I don't know how to answer it because I'm, I'm not a scientist. But I think the question that I've been getting asked repeatedly when we are having these discussions is, when you passed the mask mandate in August, you know, and everybody said, and I got calls from other physicians, you know, Amy, you've got to pass it. You have to pass it so that we reduce the numbers that we have, and we keep people from dying, you save lives, you know, and, and save quality of life. Because that's something we don't often talk about either. There are deaths, but then COVID is being, is leaving some people with issues, lingering issues. So, so it, it has impacted people who also have, have survived it. How come when we put it in, literally, our, it spiked? I mean, our death rate went up, our percentage went up. And then I've had people send me the North Dakota/South Dakota graph where South Dakota had no mask mandate, North Dakota did have a mask mandate, and yet their spikes were almost exactly the same. They followed that. What is my response to that?
You know, first of all, I would say, uh, Councilman, it, in August, we passed the mandate, and there were actually probably three or four weeks thereafter where we were decreasing in the cases. And then you saw cases increase, uh, probably September and October. And that was the place when the governor then put more DHMs in place. He had opened up everything. And then he closed, he closed it down again because he saw the spike that is occurring. So again, what I would say, it's not one non-pharmaceutical intervention, it's all of them on top of each other. It's the Swiss cheese that you had heard before presented here. They all need to work together, and if they don't, one only by itself is not going to, is not going to decrease the, the incidence.
And, and I completely, I completely agree with you. I mean, the, the mask, wearing the mask is one component. I'm just wondering if the problem is because we put so much focus on it, and it's the only thing that we make, you will receive a criminal citation if you don't do. I mean, we, we don't know how to do a criminal citation for not washing your hands or using hand sanitizer. But I, I think that's, that's kind of where we're going, or we're not, you know, we're not making it criminal to, if you, if you're within six feet of each other. I think the problem is, is this is the only one that we're making, we're, we're making it a criminal citation if you don't follow it. And so all of the scientists are saying, we're recommending masks. Is the reason you don't want to just recommend masks and you want it to be actually mandated by the government with citations is because you don't think people will do it?
Well, you know, before, we didn't have a mandate, and we clearly can show that people, once we had the mandate in place, more people were wearing masks. So unfortunately, that personal responsibility that we all are thinking is so great, it didn't work.
Well, but, but when we passed the mask mandate, actually, it didn't work. I, I mean, we have the graphs up there. We literally passed the mandate and it, it just, it spiked and, and really spiked. And so what I'm wondering is, do you think that, I mean, when you see the spike, there weren't, I don't think people were wearing masks in Papillion or Bellevue either, but right now, you see everybody wearing masks in Papillion and Bellevue. They don't have the mandate, but I think those spikes scared us all. I mean, we all went, we got to do something. So I don't know that the mandate is what did it as opposed to be, I'm with the, the young lady in Papillion that said, you can't go anywhere. Oh, there, I'm sorry, there you are. I still want to know what the box said, but you can tell me that later. You don't go, I don't go anywhere in Papillion where there aren't signs on the door that says you can't come in without a mask. You know, or even restaurants. I mean, they're all doing it. So, uh, I guess, I guess that's my question, is I see the spike, and I guess, I'm just not sure when I get that question repeatedly, how I'm supposed to respond because they're asking, you know, and I get emails from people that aren't very nice, um, demanding that I give them that response. And I guess I don't, I don't know how to respond to it.
But again, it's everything on top of each other. And we need to make sure we know that it only works when everybody is doing the same thing. And there are people who are not, who are not wearing masks, who are not doing social distancing. I mean, I, I see that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would add just a few things. My understanding of how the PCR testing works is it's testing for the presence of RNA, the ribonucleic acid, uh, the genetic material of the virus within a certain amount of cycles that the machine takes. And contrary to what you would normally associate with a higher number for a value reported, actually with PCR, the lower the number, the easier it was for the detection of the presence of the genetic material of the virus. So the higher number that you get with PCR testing is actually, it took more revolutions in, in searching the sample to find the presence of the genetic material of the virus. So you have to kind of reverse your mindset. It's not like a, um, you know, breathalyzer where the higher the test, or the level, the more intoxicated the person is with genetic testing and PCR, which is the gold test, or gold standard for testing, uh, the lower the number, the easier it was. Whether there's a cutoff on revolutions or the number of cycles that the lab uses before it abandons the search is, is the amount of revolutions the machine is set at. And it depends on the coronavirus, but I've heard numbers of forty where they, they stop the search and the machine calls it off. And if you don't have positivity below that, then they don't call it.
I would think you'd want to have a standard.
The, the lab would say, in terms of it's positive, but the higher the number, like over thirty-five or thirty-seven or thirty-eight, it would be weak positive. That's the way that I understand the lab techs call it. The lower the number, it becomes positive or strong positive. But it, now, if you want to get into presumed infectiousness, there's another step with virus isolation testing or bioassay and things like that, but, um, that gets really complicated. But you're presumed, I understand, positive if there's any presence detected in the PCR testing for, that finds in the cycles performed, the presence of the genetic material of the virus. Now, having said that, that's your, that's your lab one oh one for the day.
Seeing if they're shaking their heads yes to that.
They do. They do.
I mean, I, I was.
But Dr. Khan, do you want to come on in and take us to graduate level PCR testing?
Mr. President, that was excellent. I'm going to leave this to our great experts at UNMC to explain. But the specific, it's a CT cycle time value, and you got it absolutely right. The higher the cycle time value, the longer it took to get a positive signal. What people forget is there's two sides to this, right? So let's say I just, I'm just infect- So let's say I just, I'm just infectious today and I come in, right? You have to be careful not to call me negative because I'm really positive. And then the side everybody wants to talk about is this side, which is, I'm done with my illness, all done, and I've got a little bit of PCR bits hanging around in me. And you call me positive here? Well, I'm probably not infectious. But so if you're a lab person, you don't know if I'm on this side, I'm just about to get the big peak, or if I'm on this side, I'm all done. So, so this is why each lab then, they're all FDA-approved labs, have to make that decision of what their CT value times look like to make sure that they call the true positives, don't call the false positives. And yes, Nash, over time, we are trying to calibrate that to make sure that the CT values kind of make sense so that you don't, so you still pick up the ones who are just becoming infectious and are truly positive, but you are not picking up the ones who are done with their illness. And there was a paper that came out in the New England Journal of Medicine four, five days ago. It was a letter that said that people are probably shed, a median of seven days, you're shedding virus. You can find virus out to about 10 to 12 days. And but if you want to go to these super high cycle times, you can probably find little bits of PCR in people out to 30 days. So yes, isolation, when you're actually actively shedding the virus, is a lot shorter than if you want to try to find little bits of virus pieces in people longer. So that's a challenge. So you can't just say, hi, make the cycle time four because then all these people on this side, so you know, yes, fine, you know, fine, you know, people who have little teeny bits, you got rid of them. But all the people on this side who are, who are really infectious or about to become super infectious, you've said, eh, you're fine, go about your business. So it's, it's never that easy.
I wasn't suggesting that it was that easy. But it also, that, but your explanation also, I think, points out the, you know, the wide range of where someone can come in positive. And at, at, at maybe one side, obviously, they're more infectious than on the waning side, but they're still. And that's, I just raised the question because I think people have questions about that. So I think it's a good question to ask.
I think it's an excellent question to ask because it's out there in the media that, oh, so let us not forget, there's 450,000 Americans who are dead in this country from COVID. That was not because their CT value was not 30. Okay? There's 601 dead people who are not in this room today. It wasn't because their CT value was not 30.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized again.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was still on from last time.
Okay. There are, there are no further lights. We will now move to non-action. I believe there's a motion on Agenda Item 77 to move the public hearing to the third reading. Mr. Gray.
I would like to take Item 77, make a, make a motion to move Items, the, the public hearing for Item 77 to the third reading.
Roll call.
Claire Moe, Brennan, Festerson, Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, Items 59 through 78 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Claire Moe.
Yes.
Brennan, Festerson, Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:53.